We'll call this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask Counselor Thompson to read our mission statement.
Mr. Mayor. Silver City is the hub of an inclusive community settled within a small town that through guided growth honors and preserves its historical, cultural, and natural heritage while facilitating jobs, health, and education resources such that the residents and visitors may enjoy and protect the recreational opportunities of the area and a high quality of life.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is with action is public input, and we have Nick Seibel to discuss Community Bill Park. You have five minutes, and if you're looking at me, I'll give you a one-minute warning. Please go to the podium.
Well, you know I can talk, but I'll try to not get as far as five minutes. If I get that far with this, we've got problems. Mr. Mayor and Counsel, my name's Nick Seibel. I'm here to visit with you all this evening personally as a citizen about our Community Bill Park, and I've spoken to you before. And I sort of apologize, I keep talking about this, and it's really not my intention to be sort of the front man for this sort of thing. I've been talking to a lot of folks, and there's a lot of folks that really want to be involved in the park process. I didn't plan on speaking here tonight, but I know that later on under reports, you're going to be talking about the park, and so I thought I'd sort of come up here and present to you a proposal. This is a proposal from Community by Design, and I believe you all should have a copy of this. Basically, in talking to folks, there's a considerable segment of the community, at least in the conversations that I've had, folks that believe that the Community Bill Park is more than just your average playground, that there was a certain community spirit involved in the design and the construction of that park because the community really came together. It was the visions of the children of our community, and it was the efforts of the people of our community that made that park happen. And so in talking to people after the tragedy of the park fire, what I kept hearing over and over and over again is not just, you know, everyone's positive experiences and how that park symbolized so many positive things about the community for people, but also all of the other efforts that it sort of spawned in the community, from renewed interest in Habitat for Humanity to just increased volunteerism all throughout our community. And so in the aftermath of the fire, it really seems like a shame to pass up the opportunity we have to come together as a community and rebuild that park. And, Mr. Mayor, I understand that you were out at the Red Hot Children's Fiesta this last weekend with some potential plans for the park, and I understand you got a lot of input on that, and I really appreciate your doing that. But I'd really like to push the council to go one step further and really engage the community in imagining what that park can be. And so in talking to folks about how this might work and how we can keep it from getting bogged down, I really came to the conclusion that what we needed to do would be to retain someone with the experience of facilitating community dialogue and doing this sort of community design process. And there's a lot of folks out there that can do that kind of work. But I've got a lot of experience working with a company called Community by Design, Charlie Deans, and I think most, if not all, of you know Charlie. He's the guy that was responsible for our downtown action plan and is currently working on our theater district plan. And so just in a conversation I happened to have with him, I said, you know, this park thing, I'm trying to figure out how we will handle this. And so he said, well, I could put together a proposal of how that might look. And so it's a three-page proposal, and I'll be happy to share one with anyone else that's interested. But basically, he's just spelling out how things would work through putting together a committee and doing some community outreach, having community meetings, including meetings through the schools or the recreation centers to get input directly from children, and putting together a website to let the community know what's happening, and then actually doing the design and presenting that to you all, and hopefully having at least some community build element to that. And obviously, there are costs associated with this. I know the town's going to be receiving an insurance settlement from the park. I also know that there's a lot of folks in the community that are ready to step forward and contribute funds and hold fundraisers for the park. So if money is an issue, I think we as a community could definitely raise money to help that happen. And I'll point out to you that the last page of the three pages is a proposed timeline for how long the project could take. And I know that there's been a lot of concern expressed that if we do a community process that it'll drag on for years and get bogged down. And so I want to point out that Charlie proposes a timeline whereby we could actually be constructing a park by the first quarter of next year. And so I think this shows that a community process really isn't going to slow things down that much over some other ways that we could take. So I'd certainly welcome feedback on this proposal, and I would really welcome the support of the council, and I stand ready, and I know lots of other folks do as well, to help make this happen if this is the direction you should choose to go. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is council comments. Counselor Bedison, would you like to start?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to comment on the animal ordinance amendments that Counselor Maronis and I are steadily working on. We're working on them with council meeting, our attorney, Town Attorney Roberts Gavron, and we've been researching other communities ordinances as well. I just wanted to let you know that I hope that we would be able to have a notice of intent ready to present today, but in order to ensure that the amendments are balanced and taking in the needs and requirements of everyone from our residents to our town departments, we require a little more time. So I think that we're pushing forward on it. I don't want you to think it's stagnant, but we are definitely working hard on it to get the balance that we're seeking. Reverse 911, I'm really grateful that the system is working. I know we've had a few problems with implementation, but the central dispatch is working on that, and I think they're doing a great job. I do ask you all to please opt in by going to the Town of Silver City's website, which Click on the red telephone on the left that says "Help" and follow the instructions. I called several of my friends that lived in the area of the alert for the Boston Hill Fire, and immediately afterwards, they opted in. And so I got a lot of phone calls yesterday when I was at home about not going outside my house because of the incident that occurred yesterday. But central dispatch is there to answer any questions you might have. If you don't know what's going on and you're not sure why you received it, just please call their non-emergency number, 388-8840, and they'll assist you if you have questions about whatever notification you've received. I want to thank all the firefighters, police, and first responders that responded to the fire in Boston Hill. The fire really clearly demonstrates, I think, to everyone that while we've had rain, the fire danger is still high, and so please be careful when you're out there. And I also want to thank all the police, all the different, I think, Grant County Sheriff, Silver City PD, everybody that responded yesterday and ensured that that situation didn't get out of control. So thank you all for everything that you've done. See, on August 30th through September 2nd, I attended the New Mexico Municipal League Annual Conference in Roswell. Learned a lot, and I really want to thank my fellow council members for endorsing my candidacy for Director-at-Large of the League Board. It really did make a difference. And I just want to encourage everyone to please go over to the Silver City Museum and see their brand-new centennial exhibit that opened up this past Friday. It's exquisite. They've done an outstanding job. Kudos to everyone that worked on that. And I want to thank the folks that put together the 9/11 ceremony in Golf Park. That was the only one I could attend before I kind of got sick again, but I did hear that the remembrance at Baton Memorial Park was quite lovely as well. So thank you to everyone. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. Seeing that Faye McCollum's here from AMRAK, she put on a, well, AMRAK and Faye put on an incredible production with Pick-a-Mania. It was a huge success, and we sure appreciate that, the work you put in. Nancy Cliff is also here, who was instrumental in getting rid of those billboards. Town looks much better for that. And Nick, I really appreciate you putting all this effort into, you know, pushing a community build and design. These are difficult problems that we're dealing with. Folks I talked to would like to see something done as fast as possible. On the other hand, having read all the surveys from the comprehensive plan, I know how important it is to people that that wasn't actually a community build. So I think we're going to have to wrestle with that quite a bit. It's not going to be an easy decision for any of us, and that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Rick.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended a Friday night function at the Morning Star that was put on by Mr. Nick Seibel. Thank you. He was very, very nice. The music was nice. There was quite a bit of people and good dancing. Also, thanks to the Police Department for being there, being very visible during that night. They were outstanding. I also went to the function at the Silver City Museum, and I saw a couple of councils there, and it was very nice, very interesting, some very, very old stuff. That's it. Thank you.
Counselor Maronis.
Thank you, Mayor. Like Counselor Bedison, I'm still working on the animal ordinance with her, and it's a process that's not going to be as quick as we anticipated, but as we've been taking our time and soliciting more and more input and talking with other enforcement and counselors from other towns that have similar issues, there's some things that we hadn't answered in going forward, so we want to just make sure we clear up some of those issues and bring forward a good NOI that is something that's realistic. As our fellow counselors, I was at the museum for the centennial exhibit, and it is wonderful, and I encourage everybody to show. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. As I had mentioned in our last, I think it was the last meeting, in the game and fish commissions meeting regarding the deer depredation planning that they're going through, I've had continued talks with our regional game and fish representative, and they will be presenting to the Town Council and the County Commission at least one more time before implementing any type of plan. And I appreciate that effort. I want to encourage everybody to attend tomorrow night at 6:30, I believe, Dr. Shepherd. We're getting together to discuss a Town of Silver City WNMU Recreation Partnership, and that will be held at the Bessie Forward Global Resource Center on the campus of WNMU. And once again, that's 6:30 to 8:30. And as many of you know, the university has quite extensive facilities for recreation, and in discussions with Dr. Shepherd, we've decided that we need to go to the community and see how we can best utilize those facilities as a community, and we need everybody's input in developing that plan. Counselor Bedison mentioned that she appreciated the endorsement of the council for her candidacy for the New Mexico Municipal League Board of Directors, but she didn't mention that she was actually elected. So she was elected by probably close to 60 municipalities in the state to the municipal board, and I think she'll do very well, and it is quite an honor, and it was quite a contested race, actually. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And just to give you a heads up, I am looking at moving the next meeting of the Town Council to 9/23, September 23rd, at 3:00 PM in this very room. The regularly scheduled time is not good, as we will be in New York, I believe, on that day. So myself, Counselor Maronis, and Mr. Brown, and Valenzuela, and a whole bunch of us. So we'll make sure and notice that meeting appropriately, but watch for that, make sure you don't show up when there's no meeting. And anybody need round two?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Maronis.
As you mentioned, you know, I'd like to thank President Shepherd for actually even talking with us on such a venture. This is great, and this is beautiful dialogue that we can have with our university, which is a tremendous asset for economic and quality-of-life issues, and it's just, it's wonderful that we're able to have these efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, before I go, and Nancy's here, but she worked tirelessly to get those big billboards down, 180 and Pope Street, and I really think you deserve a big hand. And regardless of anybody's opinion of what the billboards were, Nancy took the approach, one, they were illegal, and they were in public right of way, and she was tireless in following through with that and making it actually happen and respecting public property. And thank you. Next item on the agenda is any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item is approval of minutes of the special meeting August 15th, 2011.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Bedison.
I move that we approve the minutes of the special council meeting of August 15th, 2011.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the special meeting August 15, 2011. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Town Council August 23rd, 2011. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the regular minutes of, the regular council meeting minutes of August 23rd, 2011.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Town Council August 23rd, 2011. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is reports. Mr. Brown.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, we received a notification that our final budget for fiscal year 2012 has been approved, and it's a requirement that could be read into the minutes. So that has been approved. And then I would like to present Nate Tierney from Exerplay, who is the company who has come up with the concept designs that we have here for the Penny Park project, and he's going to give a short presentation on the drawings that we've been putting up.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, appreciate the opportunity to present this evening. His name's Terry from Exerplay, Cedar Crest. Dan Dorfman is president of Exerplay. I'm located in Las Cruces, and I sell Exerplay products in some parts of New Mexico.
Can I, are you, you gonna do all the talking?
Um, I think I'm gonna do the jumping.
Just for the microphones?
Oh, okay, okay.
They're not gonna pick you up if you're standing over here.
Okay, perfect. What are you talking about? You'll feel good.
Well, they can't take people down.
That work? If that work for you.
Yeah, if I do speak, is that all right? If I just speak out?
Speak very loud. If they don't hear you in the back, they'll stick their head out.
Okay, okay. Thanks again for the opportunity. I've had a chance to meet with Mr. Penya, Mr. Brown, talk a little bit about Penny Park. We've had the opportunity to install playground equipment for you guys at Virginia Park not too long ago. So I'm here to talk a little bit about Landscape Structures, the playground manufacturer that we represent, and talk a little bit about the concepts that we've put together. And just as kind of a preface to those concepts is, they're very much just concepts at this stage. So we have just put together some ideas, very good at being able to tweak those ideas, make changes to the concepts, and kind of work with the town in finalizing a final concept. So Landscape Structures, just a couple of years ago, really started putting a lot of attention to kind of nature-inspired playground equipment. We've got a cool little video I'd just kind of like to show, just to kind of intro with that, talking a little bit about their, some of their product. If you click on the black, if you just kind of...
Nearly one in five American children is overweight. Kids aged eight to eighteen spend about six and a half hours a day with electronic media. These factors are shaping a generation of sedentary kids. But research shows that children who regularly experience free, unstructured, and imaginative play in a natural setting are happier and healthy.
Playing naturally is literally no more kids do every day. They play, they naturally play.
Steve King believes it's his company's job to attract kids outside to play naturally. So Landscape Structures created nature-inspired play systems that blend the beauty and wonder of nature with the safety, age-appropriateness, and durability found in manufactured equipment.
There are certain things nature just can't provide. It's a balance. In this case, it's a balance of nature, it's a balance of manufactured products. If we can combine those two together, we got the best of both worlds.
The Treehouse was designed to feel and look as real as possible. Glass-fiber reinforced concrete provides an authentic look and texture, plus playground-friendly durability.
They are very realistic looking because they've literally come right off of a mold off of a tree. And we can duplicate that in concrete, and suddenly you have a tree stump that exactly duplicates the bark of a tree.
Kids explore the age-ring tracing panel, talk through the Treehouse talk tubes, and discover hidden forest friends. The Treehouse even looks kid-engineered with 100% post-consumer recycled planks featuring woodgrain texture. These rugged climbers look and feel like natural rock and feature embedded plant and animal fossils. Well-placed hands and footholds provide kids with as much or as little climbing guidance as they need. The peak and the stuffer are perfect for young adventurers, while the pinnacle and the point introduce new challenges to more experienced climbers. Adventure scape components combine the ruggedness of our natural climbers with the exciting challenges of coro-gord climbing cables. Now kids can build upper body and core strength as they maneuver up, over, and back again. Adventure scape systems can stand alone or connect to other play structures. Choose from several configurations or customize your own. Let our talented cost team create an organic structure that blends into your natural environment or showcase your area's natural history. Add interpretive signage for extended learning opportunities.
Suddenly, you're looking at that, you're seeing the leaf, you're seeing the real bark, and now you're saying, ah, I did it. And I think if we can start kids thinking that way, and if they can touch the bark and feel the bark, and then go find those trees in the woods, I think we're accomplishing something.
It's a bear play equipment company that has a landscape of intent for innovation. That's why we're the perfect partner to enhance your site design with nature-inspired elements.
It's not a part structure and sandbox, but rather a whole play environment. Here's the structure itself, here's the man-made part. But here is what you should be considering, the play environment. And bring in trees, bring in gardens, bring in plants that attract hummingbirds and butterflies, and run that little path through there, and we can create all of that. It's wonderful when nature can do its part.
In the end, our number-one priority is to get kids outside to play, so they can play naturally, the way kids are supposed to play.
So they actually did a pretty good job showing some of the pieces that we've proposed in the concepts, and I can kind of touch on those as we get, skip ahead. I'll talk briefly just about the childhood obesity rate. One in five children now are considered obese, the nature deficit disorder, so really a focus on getting kids away from the video games, getting them outside and playing. Let's skip ahead. Oh, great, okay. So I'll just tell you real quick, those samples, some of those samples are GFRC. It's a glass-fiber reinforced concrete. You're looking at the recycled plastic with the wood grain. We use a lot of that on some of the paneling, kind of give you that Treehouse look. The epoxy-coated hand grips to kind of make it look like an actual tree limb. So the big challenge is, how do we bring this nature in, but yet also incorporate the manufactured playground equipment? And if you could, some of the advantages, of course, of manufactured playground equipment is meeting all of the ASTM safety standards and meeting all of your ADA standards. So the low maintenance of it, durability, being able to design the equipment so that it's designed specifically for age groups. So you'll see in some of our concepts, half of the equipment is designed for five-to-12-year-olds. The other half is designed to focus on two-to-five-year-olds. And then being able to offer all types of different components and focusing on the children's exercise, whether it's upper body, whether it's climbing stairs, sliding down slides. And then just taking it a step further and being able to give it a kind of a nature-realistic look to that equipment instead of just metal and plastic, what we see so often. Again, just blending natural elements with manufactured playground equipment. You saw some of the samples, GFRC, we take some of those molds directly off of tree bark, off of tree stumps to get an exact look, and that's one of the cool things that GFRC allows us to do. The durability of it is great. I mean, you're basically talking about a concrete piece that's painted to kind of give you that aesthetic look. We're able to put details in it. You see the squirrel there. You'll see a face of a raccoon that we've able to embed into the concrete. Talk about the woodgrain texture on the plastic.
If I could just make a quick comment. At our factory, we actually, they do a bat test. So they actually take a metal baseball bat and hit the rocks with it. It's a big thing that we deal with right now, is vandalism, graffiti. Maintenance is a big part of the challenge for a lot of schools and municipalities. So this concrete fiberglass, we've invested a lot of money into this because we see a huge future with it. We've just actually built a 35,000-square-foot factory now that makes this material. We used to have to sub that out to other companies that did stuff for like Disney, but it's a big part of our business. So it's fun to see projects like this that can incorporate those types of things because it's not for every, it's really not for every park project, unfortunately.
This, should we skip this video? Okay. You know, some of the details, just showing some pictures of some of the details that you'll see in the concepts we've done for you. It's such a huge park, and for us to show those concepts and still be able to showcase these details is really difficult, but there's a lot of really cool stuff going on in what we're, what we've designed up.
If you ever have a chance, in the city of Santa Fe, they did a big project two years ago called Mail Yard Park. It's right near the plaza, and we did a huge concrete wall, that's a concrete fiberglass wall that looks like a big rock, looks like, you know, part of a hill. You guys have been there. That's all made out of our GFRC. So that was a custom wall we did that thinks probably 50, 60 feet long, has variation of heights, but...
And we talked, showed a little bit of the adventure scapes in that last video. We have, in Concept 1, we have an adventure scape in the concept, some of the different natural climbers we offer, focusing on different age groups, all GFRC climbers. And then I'll just kind of, we'll just kind of flip through some...
part of a hill. If you guys have been there. That's all made out of our GFRC. So, that was a custom wall we did that thinks probably 50, 60 feet long, has variation of heights.
And we talked, showed a little bit of the Adventurescapes in that last video. We have, in Concept One, we have an Adventurescapes in the concept. Some of the different natural climbers we offer, focusing on different age groups, all GFRC climbers. And then I'll just kind of, we'll just kind of flip through some of these, some other concepts we did at some other parks. These are in Florida. Again, just kind of working the nature elements into the manufactured playground equipment. Give a lot of versatility, different shade over the structures. The Rotary, Fort Rotary Park, we use the recycled plastic to kind of create this fort theme. This is a cool one. Unfortunately, the picture just doesn't do it justice, but a lot of GFRC, that tree is, looks like a fallen-over tree. You can crawl all the way through it. There's different slides coming out of it, a tunnel.
You heard Steve King talk about this as well, but that sign, as kids walk up to the park, that sign is full of animals and insects, and they're to go find them. They're hidden in the park somewhere. And so, it's very interactive.
And then the cool thing about what we can do is we can customize it to your needs. You know, whether it's verbiage, talking about Penny Park, maybe the history of it, maybe different donors that were involved in building the park. We can do those types of things. We can totally make it unique to your town, your city, and we have a lot of versatility there. We did a couple samples here that, on our Treehouse, you see it on the Virginia Park, it says "Kids Only." And, you know, we did this sample for you guys just to show you, we can do, you know, we can do pretty much anything you can think of and customize parts. So, you know, we can, that's molded right into that recycled plastic. So, Concept One, and I should tell you, you know, as far as the freight costs and install costs, we're very much in a estimated, we're estimating those numbers right now. Again, it's really hard to show all of the equipment. We got a huge Treehouse on the five-to-twelve area, on the right-hand side. It's about two stories high. We can do a galvanized metal roof or recycled plastic roof. We have options there. And then on the left side, we're focusing more on the two-to-five-year-olds. You might go to the next slide. This is the same, same concept, just a different rendering with some trees. So, this is a kind of a closer-up view of the five-to-twelve-year-old Treehouse. Second story has a wire mesh all the way up to the roof. This one's showing it with a galvanized metal roof. All types of climbers and slides coming off of it, some tree stump, steppers going up to the structure. There's even a Treehouse, I'm sorry, yeah, 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 what's the base of the Treehouse design? The GFRC. Yeah, the big GFRC stump is hidden in there. You can't see it. So, there's a lot in here that we're just not even seeing from the images. We've got an EVOs and an Oodleswing. I mean, these structures alone, I could talk for 30 minutes on. They're just awesome, awesome pieces of equipment. That EVOs, with the one with the dragon, we customized it with the dragon to kind of pull in that design you guys had on your previous park. This is actually 50% of our business now. Great sightlines. So, not quite as nature-themed here, but giving the kids some more versatility, some different type of equipment, some more upper bodies, some more climbing. I've got a video on here, but I don't know if it's going to burn our time up.
We'll go through it if we have time, but I really enjoyed the comments of the gentleman's as the meeting began, because all of these, we can incorporate community. One, hopefully the community involvement's happening on the design aspect of it, but we don't want to say, because you saw that installation number, that a community build's not doable. We do community builds probably twice a month. This is a very big project, so it's not something that could happen over a weekend. It would take, you know, considerable amount of time and effort to orchestrate that, as you guys know, 10 years ago, of what it took to build the first one. But all of this stuff can be done that way. And we would be up for that challenge. It's, would really be up to you guys. We want to make sure that service is known that we can offer that.
This is the WeVos. This is the two-to-five version of the EVOs under the shade structure there. You know, we've got some snack shacks with Treehouse roofs, with some just little seats for the kids to eat and hang out. Another small Treehouse in the upper right. Some ground-level play events with some different musical panels. This is, I pulled this from Concept One, and I think it's probably true for all five concepts, but it's about 96% made in the USA. So, Landscape Structures is up in Minnesota. We manufacture everything there in that facility, except for the cables are manufactured in Germany, just because we haven't found, been able to find local or US-manufactured to produce the quality. And then the hardware is still manufactured overseas as well. So, that's why you don't have 100%.
And it's important, we could really talk a long time about the factory process, but we manufacture right now, our standard lead time is two to three weeks. So, almost all of the stuff that we showed you, it'd take two to three weeks for us to manufacture on time of order. Some of the custom items, when you get into some of the GFRC items, like if it's non-standard, we're looking at about six to eight weeks. So, there's a way to stage it in the process, that maybe the standard stuff comes, and it can be built, and then a few weeks later, the other stuff would follow. But it's a big, an important thing for us, is that we can manufacture very quickly. Doesn't matter the size of the project.
This is just a quick snapshot. I pulled just maybe a quarter of Concept One, and we had recyclability content pulled up for us, and we're talking, you know, 17% to 19% of recycled content, post-consumer 10% to 13%. Again, that's just, that's just a quarter of Concept One. So, the numbers would change, obviously, with, when I pulled the number, when I pulled this for the entire concept. Concept Two, I'll just kind of briefly hit on. The main difference is we took out the Adventurescape in the five-to-twelve area, the big rock with the cables coming out of it, and we added a sway fun. And if you go to the next slide, Dan, one more, that's what the sway fun is. And this thing's like the size of your car, and it allows children in wheelchairs to get access to it. The whole thing kind of sways back and forth. You have kids on the inside moving it, and then also kids on the outside can push this thing. Again, I have a video for it, but, it might, okay. Concept Three, the main difference is, is we took the EVOs out with the big dragon, if you can remember, in the five-to-twelve area, and we added one of our Aeronet climbers. This is a big net climber. It's about 17 feet tall. We removed not only the Adventurescapes, also we removed the sway fun, and we put a Skyrail climber, which reduced the cost some. And I believe, and we removed the shade over the WeVos on the two-to-five-year-old area, to help to bring the cost down here.
If you look back in the actual design, we've also left areas for future development. If there's maybe a shelter that needed to be added with picnic tables. Mayor, I think you made that comment, that that was some feedback from the community was bringing shade in. So, there's room for that to be designed into this.
Yeah, I'll just comment quickly. One of the things I saw at Penny Park was a lot of personalization brought into the park, which was really cool. Different businesses and people, and that open space could allow for some of that as well. So, everything's not piled on top of each other. We've allowed for space for that kind of stuff. And that's the Aeronet climber that we swapped out for the EVOs, the Dragon EVOs. Again, bringing the cost down some more. Again, we removed the EVOs, the Aeronet climber's still there. Removed a couple other small independent pieces in the, both the two-to-five-year-old area and the five-to-twelve. We removed the shade over the WeVos. We have, we moved, yeah, we added the little train down there in the two-to-five. You can barely see it, the little red train there. And then we removed one of the smaller two-to-five-year-old Treehouse structures. And then Concept Five. Concept Five, we came in and designed around the part of playground equipment that's out there that hasn't been burned. So, that's why you kind of see that big blank spot in the two-to-five-year-old area. So, we moved things more to the perimeter. We brought the Adventurescapes back. We brought the EVOs with the dragon back. We had to take the WeVos, I know this terminology's probably hard to keep up with, but we had to keep, we had to take a couple portions of the two-to-five-year-old design out to fit the existing structure. And so, that's it. Just kind of move things more to the perimeter of the play area. So, that's it. So, any questions, or?
Do you happen to have that report with you by wait?
I didn't bring it.
Okay. It's on my other computer. Counselor Bedesen?
I just have a couple of questions. You had said that you could customize some of these things, and so, I always have to bring in my archaeology, but pretty dominant in this area is Membras. And it's a type of pottery, but they have a lot of rock art. So, instead of the fossils, which are also, we have quite a few fossils in the area as well, but is it possible that if we choose one of these designs, that the rocks could maybe include Membras rock art designs, which would then give kids not just the natural information about nature, but also about people that lived on the landscape before them?
Definitely, yeah.
And then in terms of the Treehouses and things like that, can the casp be made from, you know, like a typical tree that we would have in that area, many that burned, which are like cottonwoods, rather than something that might be more evocative of something in the east or further north? Is it possible to really try to go towards what we have here, to make it look more like it blends in with the landscape?
Sure, sure. As far as incorporating some of the pottery and some of the different pieces into the existing rocks, it's no problem at all. We do that all the time for different customers. We just did a, we just did a park for the city of Las Cruces, and we incorporated a big scorpion into it. The Parks Director really wanted a scorpion. We have a lot of scorpions out there. But as far as molding to the trees out here, what, is that, is that something, Dan, you think?
Is that possible?
I think it's possible.
Yeah, make it look like the cottonwoods that were there and that are still there on the site.
Yeah. So, you know, anytime we do something, when we hear the word "custom," it's, it beats more money.
It does, I know that.
So, we try to, we try to keep things as much standard as we can, you know, just depending, but we've got a big and large budget also on a project like this, that it may have room to do something like that. But absolutely, they can, you really have artists that are sculpting these GFRC pieces, and so, they can do whatever texture's needed.
Well, I, I'm sorry that I wasn't there at the Red Hot Children's Fiesta, but it's one of those things that happens when you're not feeling too hot over the weekend. But I'd like to hear if the mayor remembers anything about the comments. It's on the other computer.
I remember everything.
Do you remember some things?
I remember everything. We presented the five concepts, the boards as they are back here, which is basically pictures of what they have on their slides at the Red Hot Children's Fiesta over the weekend. And we also passed out surveys that were to select one through five, and an option to add. So, if you, if you selected Concept Five, but you really wanted the dragon, you could add that on the bottom. If there was just some feature that you really thought, we told people, "Add, write it in." We collected 288 surveys. The concept number one is in the lead by about two votes, I think. And it is in, number four is in second place. However, the interesting factor in that data is, concept number one had about four or five comments, where concept number four has a, quite a list of comments that are, people want it added, changed. So, it looks like one is the preference as-is, four, we'd have to play with and see if we could incorporate some things. I could tell you, some of the comments that I heard was, and I did not know the answer, was, "What is the shade made out of over the top area?"
The frame is made out of steel, and then the shade itself is the fabric shade that you see out at different parks and schools.
There was great concern of the durability, whether natural or man-caused shortening of that life expectancy. There was quite a bit of excitement by the kids when they saw the dragon, because that's what they remember at the park. Some of the other comments were, "The train actually made quite a good showing," as well as "A water feature." Water fountain was written on several, but in listening to their discussion, we're not quite sure what they meant by water fountain. There was three different things discussed, which was water fountains to drink out of, more of them. Water fountains that are kind of artistic displays that create a nice soothing water fountain sound. And the other was "A water feature for kids to play in." So, we're not quite sure where that was going. Hopefully, in the next few weeks, we can refine that a little bit better. But those were, the majority of the comments were based on those three, which was the shade, the trains, and water. And Concept One, the, however, I was also not aware and did not discuss with him that Concept Five was built around existing equipment. So, Concept Five, the data on that is probably pretty invalid. I would like to see these posters go up at Community Development or somewhere central in town, maybe even the library, or somewhere for the next couple of weeks, and put out some surveys, and make sure whoever's in the area that might be asking questions can actually answer these types of questions that people might have, or that we collect the questions and get back to them with appropriate answers. If we don't see anybody, any interest in people coming to visit the concepts, then I think it should come back to the council, and we should make a decision on what we're going to do. And I, can we post that report that I sent you on our website, so that people can see?
Yes, we can post these concepts, as well as the input that you...
And then let's make sure we put a note on Concept Five, that it, it looks more barren because there's existing equipment that...
Maybe when we do something, we could, we could put on the actual concept that, that, do something that it's taken up the, with the current structure.
Sure. I can probably take a picture of the current structure and put it in that little white space, and just to, and maybe put a note off to the side saying, "This is exist, this will stay," or "This is, existing piece will stay." Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds...
Yeah, I just, I think all the concepts should have equal representation.
Sure, sure, okay.
Counselor?
I really would like to see these up at the library, with the opportunity for the kids to also put input, you know, because that's really a central place in town. And I think that there's, unfortunately, I can't remember exactly what's going on, but I think there's some new program that they're starting, that Miss Pam is.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think, you know, if we can get them there, I think that's on the 20th, maybe, next week, if we could get them there enough time, so that, I think it's the, some sort of, I know it's about books.
It's a reading, a book?
Reading program. So, if we can encourage the, you know, that have, you know, hopefully library staff know a little bit about some of the things, and make sure maybe there's a little more explanation, especially on the, as the mayor noted on, the Concept Five, because I didn't know what the big hole was until you said, so that really helps.
Sure, sure.
I could tell you, there was, I think, five slips that had multiple choices, and one of them marked all five, and basically said, "I love them all." And I know that was a young man.
Okay.
And he actually had spent quite a bit of time looking at the concepts, so it was, it was very interesting. And I could tell you, the people at the entrance booth said everybody was coming in saying, "Where's the Penny Park booth?"
Wow.
There was great interest. It was in the paper that they would be there, and great interest in the community to actually get a say in that. So, appreciate having the good artwork.
Okay, thank you. And if it helps, we can leave some of these samples with you guys, if that would benefit you at all. And then I can polish up these boards a little bit. Looks like they've been through, been through a lot.
They were out in the sun all day. You should have seen what I look like after that. Malagre, myself, my wife, Mary Alice Murphy, who else?
I'm Dan.
Jim Coats. Gemcoats, we're all there in helping make sure we got input. So it was a good effort to try to get help. So, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Any other reports, Alex?
No.
No reports from the chief, Mr. Russell? I think we need to, we need to do a break before we.
So I can call him?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I move for a short break.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second to take a short break. We need to make sure we get research and polling on the phone. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we're in recess. We'll call this meeting back to order. The next item on the agenda is under unfinished business, item A, discussion on redistricting and the proposed plans by research and polling incorporated. On the phone, we have Michael Sharp of Research and Polling. I understand it's maybe difficult for people to hear Mr. Sharp from the back of the room. If you're having trouble, feel free to step up to the front here or bring a chair or whatever. There's all sorts of room right here that will allow better audio for you. Mr. Sharp, we have before us the plans that were presented. We did have discussion at the last meeting about having a work session. However, after reviewing everybody's schedule, and I know your firm is quite busy with the state redistricting, and Counselor Bedison actually had the most concern that was expressed at the last meeting. I had asked her to go ahead and contact your firm and relay her concerns, and which apparently have generated Plan A1. So you have the floor, sir.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Counselors, and member of the public. And I'll try to speak up so you can hear me, and please let me know if I need to yell. Well, first of all, my name's Michael Sharp, thank you, and Vice President of Research and Polling. And to review quickly, we did present plans A and B, or Denise Reinhardt did, and because Silver City did need to redistrict the city council districts. And so A and B were our first attempts at coming up with some sort of districting alignments. And then, as was mentioned, we did receive some input from Counselor Bedison with respect to Plan A. And the result of that input is Plan A1, that's before you. And so what I wanted to do was quickly go through the changes, and just so you have an idea of how the plan changed from A to A1. And so, first of all, in the original Plan A, the boundary, the northern boundary between districts one and two went up Swan, all the way up to the city limits. And so if you looked at the map, it goes straight up to the city limits. And the suggestion was, well, first of all, to also look at the southwestern portion of District One and put more of the original District One back into District One. I believe in Plan A, we had District One ending at Merce, ending at Ursa Major. And so the suggestion was, well, is it possible to take that southwestern boundary and move it over to Ursa Minor, where it is today? And so when looking at A to A1, we were able to move the boundary all the way over to Ursa Minor, and then, and then down to Little Walnut Road, and then Little Walnut Road down to the highway, US 180. And so we were able to move District One southwest, put more of the original District One back into District One. And then, so what happened was District One got a little bit too big, and we ended up removing some population, again, starting with Plan A, between 35th and 33rd, and between Royal and Swan. So that little portion, those little four blocks, went from District One to District Two. And then on the north end of, as you follow Swan north, it used to go all the way up to the city limits. And now the boundary kind of goes north and hits 41st, and then it hits Gold, and then goes north and east on Gold up to Silver, and then Silver north to Swan. So that little section that I just described between Swan and 41st and Gold, that went from District One to District Two. Okay. District One still had to pick up a little bit more population, I think. And if we look at the boundary between districts two, excuse me, I meant District Two, still needed to pick up a little bit more. And we look at the boundary between districts two and three, you can see that there's an area near Eighth and, I guess, North E Street. If you look at that corner and you go down northeast, or North E Street over to, over to Market, and then west on Market, over to Cheyenne, and then up to Eighth, there's a, that little rectangle had to move from District Three to District Two. Has a difference between Plan A and Plan A1. And then one other difference, or two other differences, District Two also took a little bit of District Four, where District Two, it was coming down Silver Creek to 12th, and in Plan A, it went across 12th and then down Santa Rita. Well, in this particular plan, the boundary between districts two and four just continues to follow Silver Creek. It's down to, I believe it's north, I want to say Pope Street, and then Pope down to College. So it's a little, looks like a little, I want to say a triangle roughly, of area that went from District Four to District Two. And then finally, the final change between districts, so there's two more little changes. Another little minor change between districts one and four is bounded, I want to say, by US 180, and Juniper is the northernmost little block, it's a little trianglish, other trianglish block. You start at US 180 and Juniper, and you go south on Juniper to 14th, and then 14th over across the US 180, that little triangle did move from District One to District Four. And then, I believe this is the last change, this is another change, or change between districts three and four, kind of the north-central boundary of three, around Eighth roughly. And I have Bullard, I think, I'm trying to get that name to pop up on my screen. That's Eighth and, here's another one. Bennett, northeast corner of this little block is Eighth and Bennett, down Bennett to Broadway, and Broadway over to, one moment, please. That is Bullard. Okay, so it's Eighth, over to Bennett, down to Broadway, and then west to Bullard. That rectangle moved from District Four to District Three. And I believe that those are the only changes between A and A1. The stats still show that in Plan A1, all the districts are still within plus or minus 5 percent, and so all the districts are still fine with respect to equal population. And so those are the changes, and I guess if you have any questions or comments, then open to answer any.
Is there any comments on the redistricting maps from the audience? Seeing none from the council. Counselor Bedison?
I want to take Research and Polling, the constituents that contacted me in the areas that were noted, especially in that sort of, sort of southwest corner of what was District One, and now with Plan A1, it would be District One again, they're pleased. There was a sense of identity they had because they felt that they'd been District One from the beginning of District One, and, you know, people have these identity markers, not that they can't change in the future, but the folks that contacted me in that area are pleased. So I just wanted to make that comment. And thank you again for working with me, because I did, without providing any names to Research and Polling, I did talk about my constituents' concerns as well.
Any, Counselor Moronis?
Mr. Mayor, I do think A1 is an improvement over A, but some conversations that I've had since our last meeting, I've actually found a number of people have expressed a lot of interest in Plan B. And simply because of the, as long as we've had these districts the way they are, there still hasn't been a strong, strong sense of those boundaries. There's still a lot of citizens who don't understand where their district is. When they look at the district maps, they don't understand how they were developed. And there's, and it's, and they've, there's been some people say Plan B is nice because it's easy to see, easy to read. They know, oh, I'm in the northwest side of town, the northwest district, the northeast district, I'm in the center district, or I'm in the south district. There's a much easier path on finding where your districts are in Plan B. It also seems to be very equitable in dispersing the population. And though I've asked some constituents if they're worried about the disenfranchised argument at all, and one of the things is, is we rotate our council seats, they are very short terms. After about a year, you're re-enfranchised by virtue of you get to vote in your next counselor. And if we, and there's many people liking the idea of, let's get into a better districting and be in a better position for the next 10 years as opposed to worrying about what's happening now. I've also found that, once elected, I do feel like I strongly desire to represent my district and those who voted for me, and even those who didn't vote for me. But once I'm here, I'm trying to find, I want to come up with the best decision for the town as a whole, for the future, and, and even though, and I represent people who call me from all areas of town, just because they know me through business or whatever, and just because I'm the District Four counselor, I talk to people from all the districts. If we were to redistrict and there's people that leave my district, I'll still be willing to talk to them, and I always will, and work to resolve any issues to the best of my ability. I'm inclined to lean towards Plan B.
Any comments? You're above.
Well, I would just say that many of the points that Counselor Moronis made, I agree with. I mean, I have people from other districts that call me when we're up here, we make decisions for, for the good of the town, rather than, you know, specific to our districts. So I do agree with that. And I think that if we are going to change districts from, which would be considerable difference from the way four and one are currently outlined, and parts of three, I do think that we're going to have to hold a work session so that we can hear folks, at least give them the opportunity to come before us and state what their desires are so that we can make a decision that encompasses everyone's concerns and their, and what they want to, and their needs and their requirements. I know that it's difficult because we have very difficult schedules, but I, you know, I feel kind of strange by, the comments that I made to Research and Polling were based on things that constituents had talked to me about, and similar to Counselor Moronis, and I, I would appreciate if they would actually come forward in public and talk about their concerns as well, so that we can all hear them.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
I think there's always a, the appearance of gerrymandering, and so I'm with Counselor Moronis that Plan B, and the numbers are great. The contiguousness of that plan is quite a bit better than A or A1. So in order to remove and to simplify the electoral process, I think I like B2 the best.
Any comments? Counselor Ray?
I've talked to a few people also, and they have mentioned to me that it doesn't really matter if whatever we do is, they'll go along with. My personal opinion, I like A1 and B. I like them both.
Thank you. I really think we can't forget the principles of districting. And the principles of districting are that we have equal representation, it's one person, one vote. And in looking at the statistics that show A1 and Plan B, they're, they're much closer. Plan A had an 11.8, I believe, deviation in District Two. And I really think if we're going to go through the exercise to come out with an 11.8 deviation is ridiculous. Looking at Plan A1 and Plan B, we have the narrowest deviation. Plan B has the, what appears just at a glance, is the closest percentages as far as race with Hispanic, white, Native American, black, Asian, and other races for the census. There may be some outliers within that as well. I think this council has a long, long history of being very approachable and easy to contact. And yes, we're elected by districts, but the requirement for districts is a population of 10,000. We barely exceed that. So once we get up here, other than a few neighborhood meetings that have gone on, we truly represent the town, and we have to make our decisions based on the town and not necessarily based on our district or any one or handful of constituents. So I, here's what I'm going to propose. We're going to draft up an ordinance for Plan A1 and Plan B. We're going to advertise it, and as an ordinance, as a NOI, and it's going to come before the council for votes on, on the two options that are out there. If the council wants to present another ordinance on their own, they're free to do that. I am, at this point, I'm not inclined to do another work session on this topic. We've had two meetings and we've had no public input. We, we do have an issue of, we've got to get something done in time to do our election resolutions and make sure that the county clerk and our town clerk can get our maps and our voter registrations straight and clear, to make sure that people aren't disenfranchised by, if we don't know the districts, they're sure not going to know the districts. So I don't want to sit on this forever. The principles behind redistricting are very clear, and it's numbers-based, and it's, it's not necessarily a human opinion and feelings-based. So I think we have hard data that's based on the census, which is a tool that we're required to use, and we have some good plans. I want to see us act on them. Any comments? There's, this was just a discussion topic on the agenda, so there is no action tonight. And you know my plan.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
You may.
When do you anticipate this coming before the council?
I would like to see it as soon as it can be advertised and, well, it's got to be drafted, the two differences.
Right, right.
And then, once we have them drafted, they'll be advertised for the appropriate.
Do you want me to advertise prior to the October 11th regular meeting?
They'll be conducted just as any other NOI.
Okay.
The advertising for the NOI will be a standard agenda item. The advertising for the NOI will be a standard agenda item. The advertising for approval of an ordinance will be the 15 days.
We normally skip a meeting, so...
So, that would still be well within our timeframe, if we do it in the first meeting for the NOI in October, and then get, it would be November, which would be well within the timeframe? Because I thought December was the, was the...
I think December 13 is my last day to do a resolution.
Okay.
So, we have to have the ordinance adopted and in effect prior to that. So, if we could get an ordinance adopted that first meeting in November...
Then we'll...
I think that's doable.
And that will hopefully give the county enough time, either way.
And they're waiting on their redistricting, too. They're going through the process. So, I'll have to work with them on what precinct numbers, if the precinct numbers have changed once we have two plans to look at. So, I'll be working with them on that, and the town attorney.
Okay.
And the, our attorney has asked that we do a description in the NOI, I believe, and you can clarify this, as if you were to walk the perimeter of your district.
Okay.
Needs to be outlined very, very clear, so that the public can understand. Dr. Martinez, come on up. I'll give you, I'll give you the floor in a second. Come on up. So, we want to make sure that the ordinance is very clear, and demonstrates the perimeter, so that everybody has an opportunity to be educated on what their district is.
Whichever way, you know, goes, for me, the most important thing is that the county, and I know David Lawrence said that he would send over those maps, that would be really accurate, so that, so that when it comes voting time, we're not going to find, you know, outliers of whatever, you know, District 1 used to be, you know, it's not put in the right district that, you know, that it would be. So, that's really, ultimately, my concern is to make sure we don't disenfranchise anyone who's there to vote, because there'll be, what, three districts up for vote, because of the one-year term? Yeah. Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Dr. Martinez?
Yes. Excuse me. Should have done this before, but I didn't want to get people off of the information that they're receiving. I don't, I am not wanting for you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and neighbors, to go another meeting and not have at least some input from the general public. And I'm very, very much in favor of there being plenty of it, and that they come forward to discuss with you how they feel, and that they would come to meetings like this. I am wanting very much to make sure that important communities of interest are left intact, to the point that we feel comfortable about that. This is very important to me and many people, many places in the United States, as we're going through this, these procedures, in redistricting nationally and statewide, and in our small communities. And we know how seriously important that is, that laws have come into place in America to make certain, to a much larger degree, that we take a look very seriously at these Because we saw that in the past, there was not this kind of concern. Now, of course, by communities of interest, we are meaning that there might be a Latino community of interest over here, and an African-American one over on the other side of town, and so forth. And so, of course, we want to be within the laws of the United States as we continue with this. There are some good studies in the country today that point out that for minority communities, for example, minority communities, such as, let's say, the Latino community, or African-American communities, that it takes a threshold of somewhere around 62% in a district to make it more plausible and possible that we're going to be electing members of those communities. And I don't see that there is yet one of these districts, if I understand the information correctly, that at present has that, has crossed that threshold. And so, I would ask that you keep that before you, as you continue your work together, to come up with a final plan of some sort. I also, Mr. Mayor, and the rest of you, am very concerned about the fact that there is that district that has that 11-point variance, that deviation. We can't allow that to stand. I am with you with that strongly. And we need to put those folks into different places on these maps, and be sure that every person has one vote, and it is as equal as it could possibly be. I think the deviation standard in many places has been 5%. That there might be an average of 4, 4 to 5% on the outside, for these districts to be in conformance with some of the laws. And so, I don't know if everyone is familiar with the concepts that have come about over time since the Voting Rights Act, and other laws have come into place, but we want to be certain that communities of interest are not, on the one side of it, packed together into districts with 82%. And that, on the other hand, there is not the cracking effect of cracking minority communities, districts, let's say neighborhoods, to the point that they are left out of the possibilities for representation. And so, these are some of the things that I wanted to bring up, to leave with you as you continue with all of the good work you're doing. And thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Councilor Edison?
I just want to point out that District 2, where it has the minus 11.8% deviation, is actually the current council boundaries, and the need for, that does state the need for redistricting. And out of all the plans that, in looking at them, Plan B is one where most of the percentages are fairly even, with not the majority that you mentioned of the 62% threshold, to ensure certain communities are hopefully electing from those communities. The only exception to that would be Plan A1, where District 4 exceeds, it does exceed 62% on the Hispanic vote, with 63.1%. So, that's the only, I mean, in looking and taking into consideration some of the things that Dr. Martinez said, I just wanted to clarify that. But Plan A1 and Plan B both have their merits. So, I really appreciate you coming forward, because the more input we can have from folks in the community, I think the better decision we can make.
I appreciate being here, and thank you very much for your input on that.
Just so everybody knows, these plans are posted on our website, and there is ways to, come on up, Sissy. There are ways to either contribute online, any comments on the left-hand column, or you can obviously contact any of us, or the town clerk, and we can make sure your comments get included in the discussion. Counsel, or, can I go then?
I just wanted to advise the public that the plans were, well, not Plan A1, because that just came in this week, so I'll have to post those, but Plan A and Plan B were posted at the library, the post office, the sheriff's office, I mean, the courthouse, this county building, community development, the public safety building, they're all over town. So, now I'll just need to add the Plan A1.
Thank you. Councilor Rose?
Mr. Mayor, just a point, as we're going through this discussion, you know, I've had some feedback from some constituents, but clearly versus the population, the minority of those voters. And I would speculate that Councilor Edison is in the same boat, which is why she suggested a works session. And I would lean towards a works session myself, but I would like to point out, and maybe have some clarification if I am wrong. Through the basic NOI procedures, we would have better than a month and three regular council meetings for people to come and speak to the councillors before a decision would be made. So, there is well over a month in this process, and several opportunities for our constituents to come and speak to us on this issue.
Thank you. Yes, McGee?
Well, my concern really, as I'm looking at this, is right outside my door, and that is the realignment down East Street. And the concern I have is the topography right there. We've had a problem as far as on Plan A1, where we're going along 8th Street, and then going south down North East Street, and then back up on Montana, I guess. My concern is, is in this alignment, we basically have a hillside right at the top of F Street and 7th. And a driveway's been put in there, it's probably been about five years, and we've just continually had runoff. And I'd spoken several times to my representative, when we have rains, it's just dirt washing down the gutters. So, I would just, specifically for myself, rather have Plan B, where we're keeping the alignment way up on Cheyenne. And that's just basically looking at the topography, so that I would still be represented, the street above me would still be, have the same representative as I would, so that we can continue to try to deal with that issue. And, I mean, that's a real micro situation, but it is one that needs to be dealt with, where a new road cut has been put in, and there's been no paving or guttering. And we have a drainage problem. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex, have you been briefed on that issue?
And, I'll get with Sissy to go over it again.
Okay. We'll move on to the next agenda item, and at the pleasure of the council, I'd like to waiver and adjust the agenda. Dr. Shepherd is here to present a request for a special dispenser permit application, and it's for his own inauguration. And he's not asking for special privilege, but I think it would just be polite of us, and if nobody objects, we let him go ahead and do this, so we don't torture him and make him remember his inauguration for other fond memories of an evening with us. There's no objection?
Mr. Mayor?
We are done.
Okay.
He's still there.
I can certainly stay on the call, listen. But, I just wanted to say, with respect to the NOI, that we'll do whatever we can to help Ms. Mackey get that prepared, whenever it comes up on the, for the next agenda item.
Thank you.
And so, thank you very much for letting me conference call in today, and we'll try to do our best to, depending on the schedules, actually come down in person again.
Well, go fix the state's redistricting problem.
We'll try, we'll do our best.
Have a good night.
All right, thanks a lot. Take care. Bye-bye.
Dr. Shepherd, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. For the record, Joe Shepherd, president of Western New Mexico University. Mayor, council members, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak before you. And it is indeed true that on October 7, 2011, Western New Mexico, for the first time in about two decades, will be holding an inauguration. And yes, it is indeed true that, as the 15th president, it will be in my honor, but the honor is really mine, to have been selected for that. As per state law, as well as, I'm sure, ordinances that I'm still unfamiliar with, I come before you to ask for two things. The first is a special dispenser permit for Western New Mexico University to be able to have alcohol. And the second is a waiver, because one of the requirements is that no churches or education or schools be within 300 feet of the location where we're having it. Well, we do have a child development center there, a school there, and I, as the president, I guess, have the authority to tell you that the university is just fine with having alcohol in the intermural gym. I also need to tell you that while we're requesting this permit, and the current plans do state for it to be in the intermural gym located on our campus, that some recent developments occurred within the last week. And first and foremost, I want to thank the staff, as well as the city, for their help in reviewing and looking at this application in the timely manner that you did. But one of, we're coming across more and more non-alcoholic issues centered around the intermural gym, and so we are exploring perhaps having the reception at the Flame. However, I don't have that guarantee, I don't have a signed contract, so we decided to go ahead and move forward and ask for your permission for such a permit, but it'd be in one of the two locations. With that, I would like to entertain any questions or comments that you might have.
Any questions or comments from the audience?
Seeing none, any questions or comments from the council? Question on the waiver. Do you consider the Child Development Center to be a part of the university?
Yes.
And the university is the applicant?
Yes. There go my slight humor in terms of who gets to say that we're fine with it.
And that's where I was headed, was just to make it very clear that, as the administrator of Western, you are, do have the authority to state on the organization's opinion that there is no problem.
On behalf of Western New Mexico University, as the organization's representative and president, I have no problem with waiving that requirement.
I'm still not convinced that we actually need a waiver. I think I've spent eight hours on the phone discussing this with various parties, but I think because it is an integral part of the educational institution, which happens to be the applicant, I don't, I don't think a waiver is actually called for, but Ann may straighten me out here in a minute.
Well, my concern is the change of location for the event, because that changes the application?
Well, if the event is moved to the Flame, that's already a licensed premises. So, they would, they would just fall under that, and it would be on their property.
That's correct. In other words, we would have an active, if the council, as I understand it, the council approves this particular request for the special dispenser permit, and we don't have the event, the permit just expires as it would normally expire. If we moved to the Flame, we'd be operating underneath their license. On the campus, under this particular application, we'd be operating under another liquor license, if you will, that of the, of the, the mark, the snappy mark, number four, thank you. I couldn't remember the number it was. But I always believed on erring on the full side of full disclosure in terms of current happenings.
So, do you want, if they approve this, do you want the mayor to sign this form?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because I don't have a signed contract with the other. So, that way, if that falls apart, then we'd go forward with what we're planning here. So that way, if that falls apart, then we'd go forward with what we're planning here. And if it doesn't fall apart, then this, we just go ahead and not use.
Well, if it falls apart, you may have to come back to another council meeting to get approval for the Flame event, because they'll have to re-sign.
No, the Flame event, no, because they have their own liquor license.
And it's on their property. It's already licensed property.
Okay, so you would sign another form that...
No, we would not need anything if they move it to a liquor establishment, to that physical property. It's just like if you hold a wedding at the Flame on a Saturday night, it's a celebration, they can do it, so long as it's on property that is already licensed for liquor.
Okay, so they wouldn't need to submit a permit application at all to the state?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. And thanks for those questions and clarification.
And if they do move it, they just don't use this, and it will expire.
I understand.
Because it's approved by date. Any other comments? Entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel.
I move that we approve the special dispenser permit application for the inauguration dinner and dance of Dr. Joseph Shepherd, WMU president, to be held in the WMU intramural gym on October 7th, 2011, beginning at 4:00 p.m., sponsored by WMU, license holders, Snappy Mark, number four. And in addition, that we grant a waiver, just to be sure, pursuant to section 60-6B-10 of the New Mexico State statutes annotated of the prohibition on the dispensing of alcohol within 300 feet of a school or church for the purposes of the inauguration dinner and dance, since Western itself is a school by definition.
There's a motion and a second by Counsel Thompson. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve a special dispenser permit application and the waiver as needed. As she so eloquently stated, there's only a PhD could. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One final comment. Now that you've taken the vote, you're all invited.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. We'll see you tomorrow night. Now we'll go back to Item B, under unfinished business, approval disapproval of ordinance number 1182, and ordinance amending Appendix C, Land Use and Zoning Code 2010, Article 6, Administration, Section 6.1.1, Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. And this was a NOI that I had presented to decrease the number required for the Planning and Zoning Commission from seven to five, and it was heard before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we got a negative vote, right? It's three to two?
Three to three.
Three to three. So it failed on a tie. I'm actually not as committed to this as I may have once been. There were several issues that came up. One is, the P&amp;Z Commission is not an elected body, however, they do hold authority as a commission, and their standard is, may be accepted as being lower than the actual town council. They also brought up the fact that they have had a history of absences. However, I do think that a body of five in this town and this population, as semblance of this town council, which is five, has done quite a sufficient job on these issues. So at that, I'll leave it up to the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel.
I appreciate the comments that were made by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think that some of the comments, especially regarding lots of absences, can be alleviated by the attendance requirements that would be in the ordinance that 1182 for individual members of the commission. And I am concerned, because I think seven-member commission, it is extremely hard to ensure that we have enough volunteers to fill that, because this did fail on a tie vote, that there was no individual, you know, that could, you know, make that so that it was one way or the other. And I'm not sure if that's due to a lack of folks applying for the seventh person, or just the fact that we were considering this ordinance that's before us. I do like the fact that a five-member commission would reflect the town council, and I think that that could also assist with having difficulty acquiring members. I think there's both good pros and cons, you know, against or for this particular ordinance. And I'm in a bit of a quandary myself about which way I would vote if it was brought forward.
I think there's another issue that comes up in that discussion, and it's the ethics standard that the council is held under as far as recusing herself is based on a personal financial gain. However, the commission made some points in their last meeting that because it's a small community, and they may have a strong personal interest at some point, that might at some level raise somebody's concern as to their ability to make a non-biased decision. We need to look at whether we're going to change the rules and allow them to recuse themselves with a lower standard or not, and we haven't done that. That's an issue that just recently came up. I really think we should take a strong look at that. The other issue is by leaving it at seven, you still have to have four votes. If you go to five, you're at three votes to get a supermajority. So it's just playing with the pool. But do you want to comment? Any comments? Any comments from the audience?
Mr. Mayor, I got to put in my two cents when the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this ordinance.
Can I just get you, Nick, to number one, state who you are and actually what you're representing tonight?
What I'm representing this time?
This time.
My name's Nick Seibel, and I am appointed, I was appointed by you to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so, speaking for myself, and in my experience as a Planning and Zoning Commissioner, and also in my experience having served on the town council, I think an important point for me is that the Planning and Zoning Commission and the town council operate in very different ways. Having been in both places, he can say this with some degree of experience. To me, the town council, you know, each councillor is elected to represent a district, and then there's the mayor that represents the community as a whole. And although this ordinance does, and the previous ordinance did also, try to ensure roughly equal representation of all the districts, really what the Planning and Zoning Commissioner is going for is to kind of get as broad a range of experiences and backgrounds as you can get. And I think if you look at our current Planning and Zoning Commission, it's a good example. There are people that have been on planning staff, there are people whose backgrounds are in planning, there are people who work in construction and in real estate, so there's a wide range of experiences. And I think that on the Planning and Zoning Commission, that's extremely desirable. And so by having more voices, it helps you come to a better conclusion in the end. And I think that's a little different than what you're going for with the council, which is, you know, try to get the people represented, you've kind of got a different outcome in mind. And so I would hate to see, personally speaking, that pool of experience will down. Setting aside the issue of, you know, people having to recuse themselves, it really helps us, I think, reach better decisions, the more input that we have on the commission, because we don't really get to talk to people from the outside. We're very isolated, you know. So, anyway, that's my thing.
I just note also that the pros and the cons, you have a comment in both. I think those were very good points. Counsel Madison.
I just want to point out one of the other items in the con line that I think we have to really consider is, you know, we currently have six members on P&amp;Z right now, and if we make the decision to approve a change to five, do we do it based on who gets the short stick? When they, you know, I mean, I'm not sure how you make that decision about, you know, someone who's been committed to serving, you know, who's the one that you select not to serve?
I'm not sure it's an issue, but we would ask one of them if they wanted to leave, which in the last few months has not been an issue, and finding a volunteer to run out the door, or we would make this active upon the next vacancy.
Okay.
And just do it through attrition.
Well, then, I appreciate that clarification. I was just, I mean, I was going for the very optimistic viewpoint that everyone on there wanted to remain on, the commission.
I just want to point out, as I testify against my ordinance, I believe the six years that I've been on the council, I think we've had two appeals. Peter? So, I mean, two appeals in almost six years basically indicates that something's working over there, to me, and making a change actually may be counterproductive to that. So with that, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel.
Since we do things in the positive when we make a statement, it'll depend on the vote, I move that we approve ordinance number 1182 and ordinance amending Appendix C, Land Use and Zoning Code of 2010, Article 6, Administration, Section 6.1.1, Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 1182. Is there any other discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 1182. Whoa. Both of you, come on up.
I just want to point out real quickly that regardless of whether you feel we ought to be five members or seven members, I hope you'll pass the bulk of the ordinance, because right now we don't exist, and I hope that you want us to have a Planning and Zoning Commission. So whether you change that number or not, please adopt the ordinance.
Peter.
That was my point exactly. What happened in the recodification is that this is not an area that we looked at for changes. It got omitted from the revision, and so it's not in the code right now. So I think that what would be ideal is to adopt the ordinance, but change the part that has the reduction in the number of commissioners.
Mr. Mayor, may I amend my motion?
You may.
I would like to...
I forgot about that.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I would like to retain the commission at seven commissioners. So that would be a move for approval with seven commissioners. Can we do that, change from five to seven?
The motion and the second is to approve ordinance number 1182 with the amendment of changing the commission from five to seven.
So, page two, 6.1.1, just change the wording consisting of seven members.
Yes.
Yes. A? A. Does it come up anywhere else? Oh, we would also have to change the...
The last word, "as."
We would also have to change the number that, I know it's in here somewhere, of the majority. But I can't find it. Is that what the mayor said?
It also said five, in the very last, the last word, "as."
How would you change that sentence?
I would delete the last word, "as."
Oh, delete the last word, okay.
Isn't there somewhere in here that also states the number?
Can you withdraw your motion?
Yes. I withdraw my motion, until we figure out how we're going to do this.
Thank you.
Would you consider having staff may call the appropriate changes that reflect the interest that was demonstrated here, and we can bring it back to you at another meeting?
I'd like to take one.
No.
Did J.D. say, I mean, did Counsel Thompson second her withdrawal?
Withdrawn this.
Do you think it's that complicated, Peter?
I don't know. I just wanted to make sure there were no internal contradictions that got overlooked.
Somewhere in here it says a number that is constituted a majority.
If the attorney were here, he could probably advise us. I mean, I think these are magisterial issues. If you say, look, the intent is to have seven, and then we could rectify all the way, but if you want to have the language in front of you, it might be prudent just to wait.
Alan, come on up.
My name is Alan Wagner. I'm a citizen of Silver City. I'm going to speak, I don't know exactly what the status is. I did check the law, both the municipal code and the state code on municipalities earlier today. If you have been amending ordinances at hearings like this, where they're coming up for approval and disapproval, then I assume that it can be done, because I haven't been paying attention to whether you've been doing it or not. I do know that I looked at the state code on municipalities on what is necessary for passing an ordinance, and the municipal code, and both require the same thing, that they be published in a, you know, in a public newspaper in the jurisdiction at least two weeks before it comes for hearing, and that it be made available in the clerk's office. Neither one makes a provision for amending the ordinance when it comes up for hearing. If you've been doing that, and Mr. Scavern has been aware that you've been doing that, then I assume it's okay. But if you haven't been doing it, I, you know, and the assumption generally is the municipalities are subdivisions of the state, they have the powers that the state give them by statute, and neither the municipal code of Silver City nor the code on municipalities, the statute of the state, gives authorization for a proposed ordinance to be amended. So I don't know what the answer is, but I want to raise the issue that you may not be able to amend it here. If you've been doing it, then I'm certain that you probably are able to, but I just want to raise that.
It is a good point, and we have not been amending to substantive amount, you know, they're basically clerical issues. I mean, if we change, if we get to where we're changing the intent of an ordinance, then we're going to have a problem. So that's the guidance that we've had up to this point was, don't cross that line. And I think we may be getting there by, because what we published was an actual change in the number, and by amending it back to the existing... the number, and by amending it back to the existing would not be an issue if we were to all sit up here and vote no. But it would be an issue because this was left out of the overall document, and we're actually submitting the rest of this back into the law. I think we may be having an issue with that. And I would like us to actually take no action, direct staff to redraft it and reenter it in the ordinance process. Is there any objection or discussion?
I would just say, I think that's a good idea, given the way it's currently framed. We're going to have to make some other changes in wording so that it's not necessarily a change, or, but it's actually putting it back into the land use and zoning code because it was left out.
So, I'm going to make this request, but I'm hoping from the council that we don't get a response. Please. Is there any action to be done on ordinance number 1182? If not, it will die for lack of action. Hearing none. Ordinance number 1182 fails for lack of a motion. Staff has direction. Next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of ordinance number 1183 and ordinance amending Chapter 16, Section 16 to 42 and 16 to 46 of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code relating to the composition of the Incentive Review Committee. And this is another one of mine that, I'm a little more sold on to this one, in that we have an incentive review committee that's authorized, and it has not been active for many years. We have not had any requests for many years. However, the current code allows members of pretty much any member of Earth to be a member of our incentive review committee, and the county has their own incentive review committee, the county has their own policies and procedures that they would operate under. And I think it is the town's interest that we have an incentive review committee of residents of the town that have, that are true stakeholders in our incentive review process. And I would encourage that the two get together on issues that would cross, but I think it's important that our decisions are based on the true stakeholders of the town. The other thing that was brought to my attention, and I'm not going to try to request for an amendment, but actually having the executive directors of economic development entities that are recognized by the town represented may be something that we want to consider in the future. And with that, I would still support ordinance number 1183's passage. Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, any comments, questions, discussion from the council?
No. Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Madison.
I move that we approve ordinance number 1183 and ordinance amending Chapter 16, Section 16 dash 42 and 16 dash 46 of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code relating to the composition of the Incentive Review Committee.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second you.
There's a motion and a second for approval of ordinance number 1183. Is there any discussion from the council? There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 1183 and ordinance amending Chapter 16, Section 16 through 42 and 16 through 46 of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code relating to the composition of the Incentive Review Committee. Being no further discussion, roll call.
Counselor Madison? Aye. Counselor Thompson?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Nunes?
Aye.
Counselor Madison, you have a flip.
Mr. Mayor, I move for a short break.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second from Counselor Ray for a short break. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're in recess. We'll call this meeting to order, and the next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of ordinance number 1184 and an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico grocery receipts tax improvement and refunding revenue bonds.
Mayor, members of the council, Chris Muirhead with the Model Spurling Firm, and this is a second or third time that we've been in front of you on this process for issuing bonds for some capital improvements within the town and to refund some outstanding obligations that the town currently has with the New Mexico Finance Authority. As we discussed at the last meeting in August, there was the intent resolution where you all indicated a desire to move forward. This is the next significant step, which is the council's approval to issue the bonds, should you decide to do that, subject to certain parameters which are in this ordinance. The parameters relate to the size of the bond issued, saying that they would be authorized up to a $7 million par amount, and that the interest rate would be no greater than statutory maximum, which is 12%, which is considerably higher than what the current municipal market is, which is at historic lows right now, which supports the idea of borrowing, certainly your borrowing costs are less. This ordinance would authorize the issuance of gross receipts tax bonds up to the amount of $7 million for the purpose of capital improvements and refunding potentially up to four New Mexico Finance Authority loans that have been outstanding from 2003, 2007, and two in 2008. The source of repayment for these bonds, these are called special limited obligations under the New Mexico statutes, they are not general obligations of the community, which would be a property tax-based bond. These are, you would be pledging for repayment, the primary source would be one increment of your municipal gross receipts taxes, which is a 1/8 increment. That would be the primary source of what you're looking to have the revenue stream to repay it. You would also be pledging, as we discussed last time, the state shared gross receipts tax revenues, which is a 1.225% distribution from the 5.125% state tax that currently is in place, gross receipts tax. That pledge serves to strengthen the credit so that you increase your bond rating and obtain lower interest costs and borrowing costs. The structure of the transaction is such that it's the intention that you would never have to touch those state shared gross receipts tax for debt service. The bond document is set up in the flow of funds, as we call it in the bond world in the document. It talks about two income funds, one for your municipal gross receipts tax, the one increment we're talking about, and the state shared gross receipts tax. When the monies come into those two funds, the city would, the town would first look to that municipal gross receipts tax, that 8% gross receipts tax, to pay debt service. Only if those monies were not sufficient to semi-annually to pay interest and annually to pay principal, would you look at the state shared gross receipts tax. And I know that Mr. Valenzuela, who's done the structuring on this and talking with Mr. Brown and members of the council, the size of this transaction based on historic gross receipts is such that the municipal gross receipts tax is sufficient going forward to pay that debt service, and the idea would be that you would not have to hit the state shared gross receipts tax. Currently, you have one debt that's outstanding with a pledge of your state shared gross receipts tax. That's one of your 2008 NMFA loans, which was for some solid waste improvements. The idea would be those would repaid and be sucked into this new bond issue, retiring that NMFA debt, and then you would just have the one bond outstanding with a pledge of that state shared gross receipts tax revenues. This is an important point, just because, again, from a municipal standpoint, a lot of your operating expenses are paid through your state shared gross receipts tax. This, although a pledge, the intention, the planning is that you would never have to touch those revenues to pay debt service. The first 15 or 10 pages or so are number of defined terms in the bond world. Those are key in transactional documents to specifically define various terms in the document. Again, the key ones being what your pledged revenues are, what your project is, and the various funds that you are creating. There is a form of the bond in the document. The front half of the ordinance covers a lot of information about just mechanics of registering the bonds, paying the bonds, and redeeming the bonds. In the current world of bond finance and electronics and everything being computerized, a lot of that stuff is really irrelevant anymore. It's in there just in the off-chance that the computer database in New York that keeps all of these bonds, you decided not to use it, and you actually had physical bonds that bondholders were holding. After the discussion of that and the form of the bond, you have a discussion of the various accounts that are created. This is all would be done internally at the staff level. Again, the income fund for the state shared gross receipts tax, and income fund for the municipal gross receipts tax, a reserve fund which would serve as insurance should you ever have a debt service shortfall, and debt service funds so that monthly gross receipts tax goes into that fund, it matches your debt service, so that semi-annually you pay your interest payments, and annually you pay your principal payments. There is then, what I discussed earlier, the flow of funds, and this is critical, again, highlighting it's structured so that the municipal gross receipts tax is hit first, and only if there's a shortfall do you go to the state shared gross receipts tax. Then there are covenants or provisions regarding restrictions on issuing additional bonds. This is for the protection of bondholders that by your 2011 bonds, they want to know that there is conservative borrowing going forward, that you don't overextend yourself and put their credit at risk. And again, given the strength of the state shared gross receipts tax, that really isn't an issue going forward, but there are those tests to comply with. There are certain covenants which I would draw your attention to, which are on page Just running through those, these are very standard covenants for bond issuances for municipalities. A, that you will use the bond proceeds for their intended purpose. B, that you will make the payments timely. C, that you'll keep adequate records of your gross receipts tax revenues. D, that you'll do audits, which is already required. Many of these covenants are already required on the state statute and municipal code. E, you won't extend interest payments, as in if interest payments are due, you won't allow, you won't make a separate side transaction with that bondholder to say, we'll let you keep accruing interest and not pay that. F, that you will perform your duties as a town and municipality, consistent with the borrowing. G, that other than described in this ordinance, there are no other liens on these two revenue H, duty with respect to the pledge revenues. Principally, what that relates to is there are ordinances that impose that 1/8 municipal gross receipts tax. Once you issue these bonds, you could not revoke that until the bonds are paid off. Bondholders are relying on that credit being there supporting this bond issue. I, that entering into this bond issue won't impair any current contracts with the city. J, that the town's existence, you will maintain your corporate identity in the municipality. And K, because they're tax-exempt bonds, that you will, and this is, we will document all of this at the time of closing, but that you'll use the bonds, the bond proceeds for governmental purposes, and that the ultimate improvements that you use the bond proceeds will stay public improvements and not for the benefit of certain private individuals. From a timing standpoint, where you are after this, should you decide to go forward, is we would finish the disclosure document that would go out to the market, you'd get your ratings on the bonds, we would price the bonds, and be back on October 11th with the final terms. At that point, we would confirm that your outside parameters have been complied with, the $7 million, the maximum par amount, and the 12% interest that you're within those. You absolutely wouldn't do the deal if you even came close to the 12% interest rate, which this is not where we are. So that's an easy one to hit. The structuring of the deal based on your proposed capital improvements and refinancing is under the $7 million, so we have every belief that these parameters will be complied with by that October 11th meeting. Happy to answer any questions. This is a significant step by the council. It is not the final step. You would still have the approval of the pricing numbers on October 11th, and then it would close sometime in late October, early November, and you'd have the four loans refunded, and the money's available for the capital improvements that the council decided to move forward with.
I have one thing to that. On page 29, Section 27B, bond payments, it also does provide that we can use such other funds available to pay the principal and interest, and that's important because of the refinancing that we're going to be doing. One is for the sanitation fund, and then two of them are for the, are paid from the fire protection fund. Those portions of these new bonds will continue to be paid out of the sanitation fund and the fire protection fund.
Do the capital projects that we do have to have a life equivalent to the bonds?
Yeah, that's a good question, and just also I'll address Alex's point as well. The Internal Revenue Code requires that the useful life of the capital improvements that you finance with the tax-exempt bonds are within 20%, give or take, of the average weighted maturity of the bonds. So if you have a 10-year maturity or 15-year maturity on the bonds, the average weighted maturity might be 10, 10 years, your capital improvements would need to be in the eight-plus years of duration, so that you aren't financing short-term capital improvements and then burdening the community or the, you know, going forward for 15 years on a debt that the capital improvements have not, had no intention of having that type of useful life. The, just to address Alex's point, the, it's absolutely true, what we're pledging are these two revenue streams. It is open to use other legally available monies for debt service payment. And the fire protection fund, that one just caught my attention, you would need to make sure that that was lined up with permitted purposes under the New Mexico statute for fire protection fund distributions, and I'm sure that's what you're talking about. But I just wanted to highlight that there are many permissible revenue streams that you might use to repay this, and you can. The credit is based solely on the two revenue streams that are in this document, and a bondholder would only have legal recourse against those revenue streams should there be a default. You are not pledging your property taxes, nor any other of your local option gross receipts taxes, or utility funds.
Can I go to the audience first? I know. Nancy, did you still want to talk?
Mayor, council members, I'm Nancy Cliff. Ordinance 1184 is 45 pages long. It's complicated. As a gentleman said, it authorizes raising up to $7 million in revenue bonds. The indebtedness will last many years, and projects undertaken should be carefully chosen in the public interest and evaluated for enduring value. I read the ordinance to see what projects are identified and if their costs are justified, but I didn't find much information about those questions. Instead, I discovered language such as "to protect public health, conserve property, and protect general welfare and prosperity." That's in Section 5. There are other blanket statements such as "the urgent public need for the improvement project." That's in the third whereas. And the fact that the project is needed to meet the needs of the town and its residents. That's in Section 4G. Such vague references may be adequate for the purpose of financial disclosure, but they may not be enough to inform the public or to assign priorities. The town has been compiling lists of projects in its infrastructure capital improvement plans as mandated by state statute. The process of determining which project will be listed and their relative priority is murky. Items seem to come and go and get rearranged. There is very little transparency to this process. Apparently, there's some connection between the bond issue reflected in ordinance 1184 and the infrastructure capital improvement plans. For instance, in June, I attended an information session on the most recent infrastructure capital improvement plan, where I heard that upgrading the ballfields at Scott Park was one of the urgent public needs being considered. At that meeting, I asked whether there are waiting lists for the use of the 32nd Street fields, and whether a usage saturation point had been reached. Such a needs assessment would indicate an urgent public need if there is one. Because this bond issue is not subject to public vote, you might want to be especially sensitive to the dangers of assuming that you know what the public regards as a demonstrated urgent need. Similarly, has a marketing study been done for the proposed new clubhouse at the golf course? Is a business plan in place? Both the golf course improvement and the revised baseball fields have a limited target audience. What percentage of the population will use these? What percentage of the baseball players is female? How much does it? How much does it cost to drive from residential neighborhoods to the Scott Park area? Is there public transportation available? Comprehensive cost-benefit analysis and hard data gathering would account for all these questions, not only the initial project price. Who will examine what is and isn't a need of the town and its residents? Will this be a matter of public hearing? When? Will there be a rigorous budgeting process that ensures any projects have strict oversight, both in the construction and maintenance phases? Over how many years? How will funding for new personnel required by these projects be accomplished? These and similar questions are not addressed in the proposed ordinance. However, there is a requirement that the town shall proceed without delay to carry out the project. That's section 27A. In keeping with the objections and questions I've raised, I would urge you to either disapprove or delay passage of this ordinance. Thanks.
Thanks, Nancy.
Just as we discussed in our last meeting, as soon as, come on, Al, give me, we, the, as soon as we get to a point where it's, where the council is definitely showing an intention of going after bonds, which is after this vote, is when we would, we have all agreed that we would start having public meetings to actually break out the projects and hopefully to get the answers to the questions that you just pointed out to us. It was irrelevant pretty much up to this point to really spend a whole lot of time delving into projects that had absolutely no chance of funding up to this point. So yes, we will have public meetings and it's, I'm going to encourage the council to do our best to make our schedules available in a timely manner to make sure that we have sufficient meetings to address the projects. Mr. Wagner.
Alan Wagner, Silver City citizen. You've partially answered my concerns, just partially. If I had to say one thing that strikes me about this ordinance that leads me to not be happy with it is that I can't find you in it. This is clearly not written by you. It's not written, really, with anything that even looks like input from the council. And in the context of, you know, I know, and clearly, I spoke to the town clerk this morning. She told me, no surprise to me, that it was written by a bonding lawyer. And I don't know how closely you all read it, but, and I'm sorry, I didn't get the gentleman's name from Majol Spurling, but he indicated that the important definitions were, in the beginning of the ordinance were key transitional terms and the definitions of the project, or projects, that were going to be funded. One of the projects that was to be funded was defined, was the refunding project. It was defined as the refinancing, paying, and discharging of the refunded bonds, including without limitation, the payment of administrative and incidental costs pertaining to the issuance of the bonds and to the payment and discharge of the refunded bonds. That's a direct quotation. And key to that definition of the project is the definition of the term refunded bonds. You can't understand that definition without understanding what the refunded bonds are. When you go to the definition of refunded bonds, the ordinance says, quote, let me find Refunded bonds means the outs, means the outstanding, and then there's a bracket, you know, like a squared-off parenthesis, "to be provided," then a closed bracket, period, end of definition. There's no definition there of a key term in the ordinance. You can't understand what half of the purpose of the ordinance is because the definition isn't there. We can guess, but if it's important enough to be included and to be indicated, they're just going to give it to you. It's important enough to be defined. It simply isn't there.
It actually is real, I'll let you get right back to this. It actually is there in the version that we sent out two weeks ago. I was waiting to get the final NMFA descriptions. So the version that you have in front of you, the technical points of what those loans are, has been included. If you look at the definition of refunded bond on page 6, it references the 2003 NMFA loan, 2007 NMFA loan, 2008A, 2008E NMFA loans, and each of those four loans are defined in the document. So when I sent out the document two weeks ago for the deadline, didn't have that common practice to work these documents up until the final point of the presentation tonight. So that, just to clarify, that is in the document.
The gentleman just made my point about how important it is that that term be defined. And the notice requirements in state law and in municipal code are that the ordinance to be voted on, be published, the notice be published in the local newspaper, and that it be available for public inspection at the town clerk's office, and the town, to its credit, went an extra step and put it out on the website. But the version that was on the website and that was available for public inspection at the town clerk's office is not the version, apparently, that is being voted on with language that has just been acknowledged to be important. I understand the difficulty in dealing with ordinances like this, to deal with issues like bonds. I tried to read it, I couldn't. I'm not a, I'm a lawyer, but I'm not a bond lawyer. My eyes glazed over too. But what I did look for in the ordinance was a sense of what's it for? What are the guiding principles? And I understand you're going to have public meetings, but public meetings are, that you were talking about are in a way to nail down specifics. But to commit to borrow $7 million, there ought to at least be some guidance from the council on what the purpose behind the spending of that money is. And it's simply not there. I looked for it in the whereas section. The whereas section in an ordinance or a statute generally gives the policy considerations guiding the ordinance, the reason why, the reason why you're doing it, what you're looking for, what you're hoping to accomplish, what the broad guidelines are going to be for, in this case, the way the money is going to be spent. There's 12 whereas clauses, all of them, there's 13 whereas clauses, 12 of them tell us how and under what authority the money can be borrowed. The only one that doesn't do that just says, "it's urgent," but doesn't give any reason for the urgency. How could it? We don't know what it is that's under consideration. What's the basis for claiming it's urgent if you can't, if the ordinance doesn't tell us what it is you hope to spend it on? I'm not necessarily opposed to the town issuing these bonds and borrowing this money. I've seen some versions of what the money is intended for, some of the things I don't know about, some of the things, gee, I hope you spend that money on. But I'm more concerned about the process, about going after an ordinance that a law firm wrote without, without having made a determination before you send it to the law firm, this is at least in broad, general terms, what we want it for. And putting it out to the public, this is what we want it for, and these are the guidelines that are to guide the spending of this money, not just by you, but by future councils. You're not going to borrow seven, I find it unlikely you're going to borrow $7 million and spend $7 million all at once. It's going to be spread over time, and the membership of the council will change. This ordinance as written gives no guidance to future councils about what this money is for, and that concerns me. It concerns me that, I'm not saying I don't trust you. I'm saying, I'm concerned when there's $7 million opened up and there's no guidance about what it's to be for by the people who are asking for the, to be able to borrow $7 million to guide not just you so that the public can hold you accountable, not questioning that you won't be responsible, but the, still, the public has to have a way to hold you accountable. And five years from now, how can the public hold whoever's on the council then accountable for what happens to the money? That guidance simply isn't in the ordinance, and that's my problem. It's not that you're borrowing the money. It's just there's, that you, why are you borrowing the money? What's important to you? What's the priority for which you're borrowing the money? It simply isn't there. And for that reason, I'm asking, I would ask that you table this, you get a definition in and publish it with a definition in, and bring it back with a sense of the council included in the ordinance about what this is for and what kind of standards you're going to be using for whether the money in the future that you and future councils will be using to spend, to, for the public to be able to know and hold accountable whether the town is spending the money according to the stated purpose. Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Thank you, Mayor. Just to address a couple of the points, the project description is, mirrors the definition of a capital improvement under the municipal code for issuing of gross receipts tax revenue bonds. As we've discussed in prior meetings, the intention, I believe, and as you mentioned, Mayor, was to, at this stage, provide a broad authorization consistent with the statutes which we've done, subject then to you as the policymakers and the decision-makers having whatever public meetings you wanted to do in the interim. When we go with the public offering document to the, to the potential bondholders and when you come back for the sale resolution at the time of pricing the bonds, you would have a much more concrete list of where you're headed. And I think that's the understanding we had last month talking through this. In terms of how quickly you spend these monies or not, there actually are very strict requirements under the Internal Revenue Code about borrowing and how quickly those monies are spent over a three-year period. And so I think as you work through these projects, and this is what we're retained to do, is advise you on what projects, if you were looking at something that you were going to finance over, construct over 10 years, there may be a way to structure that, but we'd have to look at that. But I understood that there were more contained projects that would be financed and completed within that three-year period. So some of the concerns there are addressed in the sale resolution certainly, in the next step in front of the board, the council, and in the closing certificates. The project description's an excellent one in terms of, you know, what are you going to do? But I just wanted to highlight from our drafting side of it, it was consistent with our discussions to make it as broad as the statute so that you had latitude when you met with the community and as a policymaking board to decide what those projects were going to be. And so that's what we've, that's what we've done in the drafting of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments, questions? Any other comments from the audience? Counselor Bowson.
I just want to, I've had several folks comment to me that they felt that the town going out for bonds implied that we were in some sort of problem. And the reality is, is that we can't go out and get bonds unless we were stable, as we are through the management of, excellent management by the town manager as well as the finance department. I think there's a misinterpretation of the fact that, or maybe not the knowledge, that this enables the town to actually provide for projects that we will go through through a public process that need to be done, of which there are no other alternative monies at this point to really obtain since there's no capital improvement monies forthcoming from the legislature or from the state. They just are non-existent. Many of these things that we would do would have been originally done through these capital improvement projects that we submit to the state. So with there being no money, we have to find alternative means to enable projects that have been languishing, that are becoming more and more apparent to becoming very important to the town, the residents, that we are able to actually commit to doing these. And I think the other thing, I've had several people comment that they think it's going to be a brand-new tax, the one-quarter or the one-eighth of 1%. It is not. We currently receive that gross receipts tax, but we, in the past meetings, pretty much reassigned it.
Yes, it was, this tax, I believe, was imposed originally in 1984. So we've been receiving this increment since 1984.
Right. And I just also wanted to make the point that we have talked throughout the past three or four, three meetings, I think, about what the refunded bonds would mean and that they are outstanding NMFA loans that the town has. And I think that that's where the comment you had made earlier, that we're able to use the proceeds as they originally were going towards those particular MFA loans from the sanitation and from the fire protection. So they would be in line for the use because they were already a public use and had already been defined.
Yeah, somebody could add one other thing on the refunding portion of it. You're absolutely right, counselor, that the funds that pay those debts, those revenue streams would have been legally available for the capital improvements that were done. A refunding under the New Mexico statutes is subject to DFA's approval, Department of Finance and Administration. You have to demonstrate there are savings to the community or that there are covenant simplifications or debt consolidation, definite improvements for the community, usually by saving money in your interest costs. So on the refunding side of it, that should just be, just a win for the community through the consolidation of four debts into one and then enjoying these, again, historic lows in borrowing costs that you could take, just like refinancing your home, taking your mortgage at, you know, five and a half and refinancing at three and a quarter, you save those interest costs over the remaining life of the loan. And so that's, that's the intention of the refunding.
And I do believe that Mr. Brown had actually given us a figure for those savings if we did go through this process or close to, that it would be a benefit to the town that we would.
I didn't give an exact figure, but I, you know, I made the same argument that because of the savings and the market right now is that we would have the savings from our debt service for those, for the refunding.
Yeah, if there were no benefit to it, you would just drop the refunding portion of it and just do your capital improvement side of it. At this point, it's structured to do both so that you're geared up with one process that provides you maximum flexibility, subject to deciding the market supports it from a refunding side, and two, that it gives you as a policy board, and I completely agree with the comments from the community, this is absolutely in your bailiwick to decide what's in the best interest of the community, what those projects are. I just want to stress, this document isn't intended to derive policy. It's intended to authorize the issuance of the bonds, subject to this body deciding what the projects are going to be and deciding as a policy board, what's in the best interest of the town. So while I understand it's a highly technical document, I agree with, you may be looking for more in there than is intended to be in there, and that's because there are subsequent meetings of the council and there will be subsequent action of the council deciding what those projects are.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could, from what you had told us in the original timeline, this just shows further intent of the council to do this, but it is not the, it's not the be-all, end-all, that there's still the option if we don't receive the interest rate pricing numbers that we desire and the, and as well as, I guess, is it credit rating, credit score from Standard Poor's and the other, that we can still, you know, we don't have to go forward on this.
Right. This is a significant moment. It is not, it does not bind you to close the transaction.
Not at this time.
Right.
But the October 11th pricing numbers would bind us.
At that point, you are going to enter into a contract with the purchasers of your bonds, saying, "we agree that we will sell you our bonds for X purchase price barring circumstances that fall within allowable exit of that contract," such as, you know, which 10 years ago you might laugh at, complete collapse of financial markets, international conflict that impacts financial markets, the repeal of tax-exempt status municipal bonds. Again, I've done this 20 years, 10 years ago you say that. Again, I've done this 20 years, 10 years ago, you say that, you think, these are, you know, just never going to happen. All three could happen, and, you know, and the revoking of municipal debt tax exempt status is on the table in the debt reduction talks. We've seen historic financial problems in the last three years. We are in the middle of international conflicts. So there's always a risk that between signing that bond purchase agreement and closing, something could happen, much more than I would have said five, 10 years ago. But you are right, on October 11th, should we stick with the schedule and you decide, okay, here's our projects, here's our borrowing costs, here's our savings, this is what we're looking at, it all fits. If you approve that, then you are entering into a contract that's going to bind you going forward.
So on October 11th, if I'm correct and understand what you're saying, we would actually, if that is the date that we adhere to, we would have to have our projects to present to.
You, I think, as a policymaking board, would have, what we would want to see going to the market, and this may, we may want to move back a couple of weeks, we can talk about that, is some grouping of projects more than the broad statement from the statute. You know, okay, we want to, and this happens all the time, here are a list of five projects that we anticipate doing, to the extent we have monies available to do it, and then it's up to you to decide how you do it. But you want to give the bondholders and the investing community, when they analyze whether they want to buy these bonds, a sense of what you're going to do. And there can be some wiggle room in there as you polish that up. But I think you do want to have some consensus, as again, the policymaking body, of what that group of projects might look like.
Well, and I think it's also important to ensure that our residents, you know, the constituents of the area actually understand what it is that we plan to do with these monies before they completely.
I absolutely agree.
Agree.
Yeah. I think that, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Maronis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, to, as I look at this, it does, the point made that there's no real names attached or anything, that is true, but as I look at this, and this falls into my lap, it seems to follow so many of the comments I've made and the guidance I've given to staff and the public comments, even to the point of, as I go back and think about when I was trying to get this position and the platform I was looking for and trying to use town money efficiently, trying to use the money to our discretion, to use our money to move us in a good, positive, and swift way of getting good infrastructure and improvements to position us as we, as this national recession moves forward, we want to, we want to be forward and swift and get ourselves in a good position so that we can reap the advantages of the end of the recession. As I look at what we have here, one of the things that was really attractive to me when we first started talking about this publicly a month ago or so, was the fact that there is no new taxes here. This is the tax base that we have, and we have some cash flow that as a policy board, as staff, we need to use to benefit and to serve our community. In the absence of doing something like this, there are alternatives. We could always use this type of money, these cash flows as matches for grants. But at that point, are we using it efficiently? Are we using it for our discretion? Or are we going to be at the mercy of who's grant giving us these capital project grants? If, there's only so many of these capital projects available, as Counselor Badson mentioned, and are we just going to be chasing those that are available with this money? That's not necessarily efficient. It's not necessarily using our money the way we want to use it. And it's, and it may be making improvements that don't advance us at all as we go forward. This is a way of using those same cash flows that we currently have to pay this bond and actually get monies so that we actually dictate what the uses are. And that, and by dictating, we haven't dictated anything yet because we don't know what the town and the community want. That will be a part of the public process that will be going forward as this materializes. So from my standpoint, this is following a lot of the guidance that's been given by the council. It's following a lot of what I've been talking about publicly and stood for over the last year. And it is a much more efficient use of our money that we currently have, and it's using it, we are going to be, as a community, dictating what the funds are used for. And that is something that I really appreciate because many of the capital project grants and projects that we have now, I always wonder, why are we doing it? Just because that's all that's available? And that makes far less sense than actually going out for this bond issue at a much better rate, and we're going to be giving much more bang for our buck for our community. And that's just the way I see it. As a businessman, this makes far more sense. If I was, you know, as a person who's been active in nonprofits, if this was available for nonprofits, I think this would be, this would be beautiful. Unfortunately, they're encumbered to, or they're limited to chasing grants. We're not, and I would, I've always been a strong advocate of doing something like this, even though my name isn't on here as a sponsor, this is, this is something that just falls right in line with everything I've been saying for the last year and a half.
Counselor Thompson.
I want to make sure that, well, I think that Alan Wagman and Nancy Cliff's comments are really good, and I think what their comments are, if I understand them, is not, they're not criticizing going after the bond. I think that if I understood them correctly, it is a criticism of the process in which there are uncertain about what the capital improvements, what they're going to actually be. And I think that they would like to have assurances that that process is going to be transparent and that we are going to look at this really carefully. One of the problems with having an amount of money, like $5 million to $7 million, is that it's easy to spend money. And I'm working right now with all the Leopold kids as a way of looking at how this process runs. And it is incumbent upon us that it is as transparent as possible and that we look at these capital improvements as carefully as possible. And how we assure them, I'm not really sure. I'd like to see, this is where I'd like to see work sessions. I think this is going to be, figuring out how to spend this money is going to be really Everyone that I've talked to about it has a lot of ways to spend, the money, it's not going to be a problem to spend money. How we're going to spend it's going to be very difficult. So I would like to see, I'm with Counselor Maronis, that I think this is a really good way to secure money, and very much hopefully with Nancy Cliff and Alan Wagman in needing to make sure that this is a transparent process, that we look at these things really carefully.
Any other comments?
Just as far as the transparency of the process, one, is it's required by law. We can't develop this list and implement the list and spend this money in a dark smoke-filled room in the back of City Hall. It would be illegal for us to do that. As far as this document, you know, you're absolutely right. This is not something that has the personality of any person on this council. This has the personality of the New Mexico State Legislature and the financing world of the United States in it. And I could tell you, and I had Alex in my office and I've spent time with Mark, I went through every statute, every ordinance in this town that has to deal with financing, the statutes on the state. I spent days looking at this stuff. Somebody came to me and asked questions about the payment schedule. I didn't know, and I was wrong with my assumption. Alex cleared that up, and Mr. Mayorhead responded to that as well tonight. This may not have my personality in the document, and the people that are concerned about it may not care about my personality and may harm the chance, but I could tell you, this document is not sitting before us, at least I will speak for myself, uninformed. When I went through and read the state statutes, I came up with tons of questions because I didn't understand them, and I felt that I have a responsibility to understand them. And it was, this is something new for me. So I spent a lot of time on it. And I've also spent many, many years working with Mark. And I think we have hired a good, qualified advisor on these projects. I've been with Mark on projects that went well and didn't go well. And he is an upfront man, and he has years and years of experience in these projects. To go back and address some of the issues as far as what are we doing to future councils, that is absolutely a concern that we have to consider. And some of the discussions that actually started this process some months back, we had that discussion. And we've had it, I've had it with Mark, I've had it with Alex, and we've taken a look at the entire state situation with the state legislature. I've made comments in the last several meetings about where that's taken us and where it looks like it's going, I'm not going to repeat them. This sets us on a course, and our town administration has a plan that allows us to think local and address local issues at the local level, which is absolutely where we need to be, and gives us an avenue that we can get on a capital improvement plan that we're in control of, not just chasing a grant that may be made available by someone in DC or elsewhere who thinks this is a need within communities, and we have to make our need try to fit the funding that's available. So this financing method that we're going through, I absolutely support it. I think it is setting a course that is positive for the town overall, and it, you know, these documents don't specifically set the policy as you had mentioned, but it does set a policy direction for the town as an overall package and an intent. Counselor Thompson mentioned, how do we spend the money? You know, if, if anybody in this room can't come up with $100 million worth of improvements that need to be done in this town, you got to get out more. We have needs. We've discussed this in the past meetings, that one of the biggest assets that we offer to the world is our quality of life and our location. And our location, we can't change, don't want to, thank you, but the quality of life issues, we can change. And if we're going to recruit business, whether it's one person or many persons, we have to be able to offer quality of life. And it's everything from recreational activities to arts to, I mean, there's a whole realm of things that people look for when they're looking at a community. I strongly encourage this council to support this, and I am absolutely confident as well that Ms. Cliff and Mr. Wagman are going to make sure that the process that we follow in developing our projects is transparent. And if we waver from that, I don't think either one of them will be shy in pointing that out to us. And that concludes my comments. Any other discussion?
Discussion? Entertainer motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
I move for approval of Ordinance Number 1184, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico Grocery Receipts Tax Improvement and Refunding Revenue Bonds.
Mr. Mayor?
I second.
There's a motion and a second? To approve Ordinance Number 1184. Is there any further discussion in the council? There's a motion and a second, no further discussion, to approve Ordinance Number 1184, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico Grocery Receipts Tax Improvement and Refunding Revenue Bonds. Roll call, please.
Counselor Maronis?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Thompson?
Aye.
Counselor Badson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, everybody. The next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of public celebration permit application two for the Members' Region Arts Council's 15th Annual Weekend at the Galleries on October 7th through the 9th, 2011, to be held at the Seat Boat Center for the Arts, 214 West Yankee Street, Silver City, New Mexico, license holders High Desert Brewing Company, La Escrusas, New Mexico, and La Esperanza Vineyard Limited Liability Corporation out of San Lorenzo, New Mexico. Ms. McAlmont, thank you for your patience tonight.
You're welcome. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Fay McAlmont, Director of the Members' Region Arts Council, here to get your approval of the special dispenser's permit. This is the 15th Annual Weekend at the Galleries, and the Arts Council is actively engaged in doing just what you were talking about, improving the quality of life here in Grant County. And I think that this community is extremely fortunate to have 22 viable galleries in our downtown area, and we're very happy to support them with this event. So we're asking you for your approval of the two special dispenser permits for this kickoff event on October 7th.
Any discussion? Counselor Thompson?
I have an association with High Desert. Do I need to keep bringing that up?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Yeah.
Counselor has a business interest with High Desert that is minimally financially advantageous to him.
I have no idea.
Does, what is the council's desire as far as the need for Counselor Thompson to recuse himself?
I have no problem.
I have no problem.
The council has decided that you may participate in this agenda item. Any other comments? Our audience laughed.
Okay.
Thanks, Nick. Any other comments from the council?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Entertainer motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Ray?
I make a move to approve public celebration permit application two for the Members' Region Arts Council 15th Annual Weekend at the Galleries on October 7th through the 9th, 2011, to be held at the Seat Boat Center for the Arts, 214 West Yankee Street, Silver City, New Mexico, license holder High Desert Brewing Company, La Escrusas, New Mexico, and La Esperanza Vineyard LLC, San Lorenzo, New Mexico.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the public celebration permit as presented.
Any other discussion?
There's a motion and a second to approve the public celebration permit application for Members' Regional Arts Council's 15th Annual Weekend at the Galleries, October 7th through the 9th, 2011, as presented on the agenda and presented tonight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion and possible amendments of the 2013-17 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan.
We were talking about infrastructure projects. Here's a, here's our preliminary proposal to the town council for next year, 2013 to 2017, capital infrastructure improvements. What has happened is this is staff's recommendation to the town council. Basically, the focus of this project, I mean, this plan is 2013. Everything on 2013, the staff has identified funding sources for all of these projects. So we did put some priorities on them. For instance, the baseball, I mean, the park shop building re-roof, that is a safety issue that we are going to need to have done this next year. that we are going to need to have done this next year. There was a project that was removed here accidentally and that was next year's CDBG project up on Chihuahua Hill, street and drainage improvements, which we will need to have put back in here. The planning staff person that has been working on this list while updating the database thought that the next year's project was this year's water project, water line extension, and no, it is actually the, you know how we've been rotating one year's water improvements to next year's street and drainage improvements? This is actually the street and drainage improvements project for next year. So, any discussion?
Any discussion? Counselor Bedison?
This needs to be adopted by the last meeting in September.
Counselor Bedison?
I have a question. What's the difference between 2013-24 and 2014-17, which both say re-roof of the old Waterworks Building, one for substantially more, which is the 2014-17?
One is just shoring up the old sections and the expensive one is putting a brand-new roof on the entire facility.
So by extension, if we were to, you know, make that a priority of one of the things that we would do under this, the shoring up would not make the requirements, we'd have to do the new roof. So I noticed that the larger amount, the $250,000, is under 2014 and I would propose that it be moved up.
And what number is that?
It's 2014-17.
Where do you propose moving it up to 2013?
I'd like to move that up to 2013, within that range. I was actually, I have in my notes that hopefully up to number seven, you know, that will move everything down. And I'm not sure about the 2013-03 of the clubhouse, the golf course. My concern is that the Waterworks Building is on the State Register of Historic Properties and I think it's eligible for the National Register. And if we do provide a new roof and everything else like that, we actually open it up to a variety of quality of life projects that could be undertaken in that building and around it. So that's the reason why I'd like to move it up. And I just, if you could explain to me the 2013-03 clubhouse at the golf course?
Well, basically, the intent of the clubhouse is that currently the town owns the golf course.
Right.
And before we leased out the golf course, the town was subsidizing the golf course in the amount, in the range of $250,000 a year. And this was back in 19, the last time that we actually operated was back in 1995. So the intent is that, the way that the lease stands right now, is that all of the revenue is generated from the golfers who go out and golf is reinvested into the golf course, into the capital improvements. And the intent is that they're unable to increase the number of rounds played substantially. So the intent is to put the clubhouse out there to increase the amount of revenue, dollars generated per round, so that they have more money to invest back into the golf course. And this way, we, the town, avoids having to subsidize them. It's a one-time investment into the golf course where our return on investment, if you really think about it, if we're running and we had to subsidize it at $250,000 a year, we would have our return on the investment within two years.
So my question is, would it meet the standards?
Yes, because we own it, the company does not profit.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
That's part of the lease, is that they do not take any profit from the operation of the facility. Everything is reimbursed, reinvested back into the golf course, our facility.
Okay, and one more question. You know, for a number of years, we've had a Veterans Park Advisory Committee and I don't know if the Veterans Park, the actual development of it, is anywhere on the ICIP list.
You know what, it's not, and that was one thing that I had talked to somebody about and we need to put it back on.
I would like to see that put up into 2013 as well and hopefully be something, a project that would be considered if we go forward with the bonds because I think, you know, that committee was very, very active and they had a number of plans that they had presented to the council and, you know, I would really like to see that go forward. It's a way for us to honor our veterans as well as provide a really nice park, extension to the park we already have that will really be to the public benefit.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
I actually had the information from Mr. Ray and he took it by last week, so I have it on my desk.
To comment on the Veterans Park? I don't mind it being on the overall list. The comments that I've received actually from the veterans group is that it's almost a fragmenting project versus bringing them together because there is a very well-done park, the Baton Park, that is not completed and it does serve the veterans of this community as well as the entire county. For us to start building another memorial park when we haven't, as a larger community, actually finished the last one that we started, I think we're fragmenting instead of building cohesiveness. I'm not opposed to having something in Silver City. I think it's very important that everybody remember our veterans and those that gave all. I just want to make sure that all the veterans groups are on board and that the process has worked out with the community.
Well, I agree with the mayor on that. I mean, given what he just said, I think it, I do want to see it somewhere on the list, at least, put on the list so that it's, you know, it's something that we have and we are considering.
Counselor Ray?
Getting back to what the mayor said right now about the Baton Park, we have our own memorial there and it's for, it's called the Forgotten Veterans Memorial and it has never been called the Vietnam Veterans Memorial. It's always called the Forgotten Veterans Memorial Wall or Memorial. I don't think that it's feasible at this time to have another memorial here in Silver. This one serves in Fort Beard and centrally located and also we have the Baton Park there also. So with that, I hope that at this time and point, I don't think it's feasible to have another one here in Silver.
Would you object to keeping it on the list, just not giving it a priority of next fiscal Any other? Couple of questions. Jeff?
I didn't catch Sir Ray's response.
He did not object to being on the list somewhere. Just not such a high priority. I really think...
I'll talk louder.
We probably need to actually have a work session at some point fairly soon regarding the Waterworks Building. I respect what Counselor Bedison was saying, that it's, it is a historic property. I think one of the tragedies in this town was when the train station was torn down. However, I also did take a recent tour of the Waterworks Building and we need to make up our mind on this and we either need to make a commitment to it or let it fall down. I mean, right now, as it sits, we could nickel and dime that building to death and keep it upright and nothing more. And it is really not adding value to the community without us finding a purpose. And you mentioned the quality of life, educational opportunities within the building. Well, we need to figure out what those are and figure out a way to implement them so that we preserve that history. Right now, if somebody gets in that building, it's really dangerous in there. And just sometime in the day or two before I went, part of the ceiling fell down and right when you walk in the front door. If you were to get past the barricades, there's some mighty big holes that you would never be found. I just really think we need to figure out and make a decision, what are we going to do with this building? And quit nickel and diming it and kind of teasing those that have such a strong interest that they were interested. I'm not impressed with our level of interest at this point. So, you know, I definitely agree that the Waterworks roof should stay on the ICIP plan until we decide what are we going to do with it? And we need to make a decision. I think it's the council's responsibility.
Well, I was going to say, I respect what you have to say and, you know, I, there've been a number of plans that the community has floated over the past number of years that would really, would move towards, you know, quality of life issues. I think it is the council's responsibility to decide what we're going to do. I personally, as someone who appreciates history and that building and know that there's any variety of things that can be done with it that would be to the public benefit, that, you know, I would really like to see us move forward on it and I agree that we do need a specific session just to talk about the Waterworks Building and what we're going to do. Because I would obviously be in favor that we make a decision on, that we are going to do something and actually have a plan.
I think we should include in there the town manager's next town car, the Dodge Ram that's, power wagon that's sitting back there.
Many, many, many times to purchase that vehicle.
I would really like to see us hold on to it, just my opinion, and see if we can't work with a car club or get some donations and actually restore it. I think next to the fire engine, having the old power wagon in the parades would just really be awesome for this town. And it's sitting there, it's not a building which seems to get all the interest in historic preservation, but looking at it, it's definitely a part of our history.
I completely agree because I think it should be part of, you know, Copper Country Cruisers and be up at the car show when it's all redone because, and I think if we can do that sort of, you know, public, you know, private partnership to see that move forward, that's just as important to me as the building history itself and remembering what the town was and where we're going, I think is part of that educational package and quality of life.
My only other comments on the ICIP, and pardon me if I just missed it in here, and maybe this is on purpose, but have you seen the car that our chief of police is driving What year are we replacing our police fleet? It's newer than the power wagon, but...
We're hoping for next fiscal year.
That's important and I'm just razzing you about the chief's car, but I don't care if he has a car. But I think it's very important that our officers have good, quality, safe equipment to operate in and I know this fleet is aging.
And that would be for 12, which is what's listed, 12 police vehicles purchased and equipment, 2014-12. Great. That would, of course, replace the most oldest, such as the chief's vehicle, even though the mayor doesn't really care if he has a car.
You can keep the old one if you want.
The townspeople may care, you know, it's a public project there.
Any other comments on the Infrastructure Capital Improvement Planning? We have the amendments through and it will come before us on the 23rd at 3:00 PM for a vote. And it's really, really important that, I mean, if you've got changes you want to make on it, make them now because on the 30th, it absolutely positively has to be postmarked and off. So it's under a deadline that's... Being no further discussion or amendments on that, we will move on to approval/disapproval of Certification of Emergency Operations Plan. Would you like to present it?
Mayor, council members, Ricky Villanobos, I'm the captain for the Silver City Police Department and also the Emergency Operations Manager. The Town of Silver City is vulnerable to numerous hazards. It can be human costs such as aircraft crashes, technological, such as involving hazardous materials, infrastructure disruptions, could also involve utility and power failures, natural hazards such as severe weather. The Town of Silver City Emergency Plan that you have in front of you establishes a framework that ensures that the city is prepared to deal with any of these hazards. Its mythology through which the city will mobilize its resources in the event of an emergency, thereby restoring the municipality and the state of Normacy. It is designed to ensure that all agencies which become involved in an emergency are aware of their respective roles and responsibilities during the emergency and to participate in the emergency management program. Additionally, the emergency plan makes provisions for the earliest possible coordinated response to an emergency and an understanding of the personnel and resources available to the city and the recognition and additional expertise and resources be called upon. Although the emergency plan itself cannot guarantee an efficient effective response in emergency as they differ, it must be utilized as a tool to assist in emergency municipal services. So I ask that you pass it. It'd be a building structure, it'd be a living document, it'll be updated, it gives us a platform to start. Any questions?
Any questions? Questions from the audience? This, a discussion that me and you had in my office is when we edited this, one is, I think we have to acknowledge that emergency management is not necessarily a priority of local governments in most areas of the country. We devote far insufficient amount of resources to it because we honestly hope we never have to use it. And we do a disservice by doing that. Obviously, I have a background as county emergency manager, I'm still responsible for the hospital's emergency management functions. Something, and this is really basic towards Alex, is we have to make sure that the captain gets the sufficient training to conduct his job very, very effectively. And I could tell you, it is critically important because any emergency manager that wants to find a job can follow the disasters because the emergency managers are always fired right after the disaster because they blame them for everything. We absolutely have to make sure that he is trained in emergency management as the entire system. I support the approval of this plan now. I think after we send him to training and there's all sorts of free training, especially if... if you like Virginia and Alabama. I think we would see a different plan after you come out of that. This plan is very, very targeted towards emergencies, as police and fire understand emergencies. But when you say some recovery agencies, such as Public Works Department, well, Public Works Utilities, if somebody contaminates our water system, that is going to be a Public Works and Utilities primary response. And this plan doesn't really acknowledge that there's other emergencies that affect the overall operations of the organization. And it is important that we have a plan in place, and this is a good start. I would really like to see us not so much focus on what is commonly known as emergencies, red lights, sirens, people shooting at each other. And then I'm just going to give you a hard time, because I think I mentioned this in my office, but up here in the emergency, emergencies are usually handled by the local fire and law enforcement resources. I spent 20 years in this town responding to our agency to over 300 calls a month. And EMS is a critical agency to be included in emergency response. And to bring a plan to me without that, I just, so, you know, I'll support approving the plan. I know you've put tons and tons of work into it, and the plan that came to us before, and then I took way too long to actually get it back to you with my recommendations. But I commend you for putting it together. I truly hope that we do follow the FEMA crosswalk in developing future plans, and as we amend it. And they're really, really tough. And I've sent plans back to them three, four times, because they're so picky about making sure that it is their intent. And some of it's just, you have to get past the different reviewers that have their own. But, good work.
Thank you.
Counselor Bedeason?
You know, I agree with everything the mayor said. I mean, for me, I think if you go to training, what will get out of it is something that will actually be relevant to our area, because one of the things I picked up was, under Table 5, possible emergency event, a Level 1 is a serious fire accident, and it's only supposed to be the local level. Well, we already know that, for us, that could go up to a Level 4. And so I think that there'll be changes, inclusions, that will be specific to our area, and we'll consider those. And what will happen ultimately is through training, the response to anything that could happen will be more fluid and much more immediate, you know, not need perhaps as much guidance, because, you know, some people, when they make something like this up, they literally, you know, the emergency is going on, and they're busy trying to figure out what they're supposed to do by reading this. Whereas, I think the training's going to be imperative to ensuring that fluidity and rapid response. So, I support this.
Any other comments? Counselor Morales?
Mr. Mayor, I also support this. I think the most important comment Captain made was that this is a living document, and it's going to be improved upon, based on your recommendations, and there's always going to be recommendations. And the fact that it's a living document, it's important, and I think this is a great start.
Also, I think it's important as well for both the chief and the town manager, Mr. Brown, to understand, when we assign the captain to this job, he is actually responsive to the town manager. And he can bypass the chief, and that's by federal requirement. It's Homeland Security Presidential Executive Order Number 3, I believe, defines and states that we must follow the National Incident Management System. And we cannot burden, you can't put your security buried into a department. He has to be able to step out and operate as the emergency manager, within, obviously, the authority that is allowed by the codes within the town. You can't go buy the new fleet of police cars. But it is really important, and I've had this argument with the state, as well, as they look at reallocating homeland security under the Department of Public Safety. I think that's a very bad plan. I think emergency management really should step out and be placed in a position that you are responsive to the ultimate authorities within the organization. And I think that is the intent of the National Incident Management System, and we should do our best to follow that. With that, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Bedeason?
I move that we approve certification of the emergency operation plan.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve certification of emergency operation plan. Any more discussion from the council? There's a motion and a second, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And I'll need you to check your signatures on the document.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of Bid 1112-3, homeowner rehabilitation.
Mayor and council, the town receives one bid from Chavez Plastering and Cement Construction in the amount of $53,996.3. It's staff's recommendation to award the housing rehab project to Chavez Plastering and Cement Construction.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
I move that we approve Bid 11/12-3, homeowner rehabilitation, per staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second it.
There's a motion and a second to approve staff recommendation on Bid 1112-3, homeowner rehabilitation. Any discussion, questions? The bid is within the approved funding.
Budget funds available.
Thanks. Any other discussion? There's a motion and a second, no further discussion. All those in favor of awarding staff recommendation on Bid 1112-3, homeowner rehabilitation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of Bid 1112-4, homeowner rehabilitation.
Mayor and council, the town of Silver City received one bid from Oak Ridge Home Industries in the amount of $56,876.54 for bid, home rehabilitation, Bid 1112-4. It's staff's recommendation to award the bid to Oak Ridge Home Industries, Inc.
And there's...
And there's funds available, they're both grant.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
I move that we approve Bid 1112-4, homeowner rehabilitation, per staff's recommendation.
Mr. Mayor? I second it.
There's a motion and a second to approve staff recommendation. Just a question, this is a mobile home swap? And that fits within the program, so long as the mobile home is yet approved?
Yes, it does, Mayor. What the parameters of the program is, is that we cannot put any money as a rehab into a manufactured home that's older than 20 years old. This one is a 1972, but we can completely replace it. And that is our plan.
And who's responsible for inspection on this setup?
The state. Community's, the construction industries division.
Is that shed?
Yes.
And we're okay with the conditions of 30% down to order?
Yes, we can do that.
Any other discussion?
No.
There's a motion and a second, no further discussion, to award staff recommendation on Bid 1112-4, homeowner rehabilitation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I second it.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.